We welcome each one of you here this afternoon for our meeting. I know we have several recognitions and events and items on our agenda tonight that bringing out a more than unusual crowd here for us tonight. And glad that each one of you are here. I trust that you had a happy Thanksgiving. And we're now into the month of December and closing out 2023. And looking forward to our Christmas and New Year holidays. But again, thank you for being here to participate in county government tonight. We thank you for that process. At this time, I'm calling on Captain Michael Mabe is here for our invocation. And then we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
Let me say it's an honor to be here tonight. Appreciate all you do in your service. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you right now in Jesus' name, Lord. We're so thankful for the opportunity to stand and to ask, Lord, that you would touch this board. Father, we're thankful for the county commissioners, Lord, and all that they represent. God, we pray that you'd fill them with your Spirit, give them that wisdom. Thank you for their sacrifice of time away from their families, Lord, away from activities. God, we're just indebted to the service now. And Lord, I ask that you'd continue to give them that knowledge, fill them with your Word, keep them safe, protect all of us here. We thank you for the administration, Lord, and all that it represents. Father, we ask that you would continue to anoint these folks. And Lord, help them to pray for us as well, the people they represent. We thank you for their service. We ask it all now in Jesus' name. And all God's people say, amen.
Thank you, Michael.
(inaudible) United States of America and issue the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, as I said, we have reorganization and other items tonight. But our first item on our agenda for tonight is a special recognition for Linda Shirley, who's retiring from the Randolph County Public Library. I think close to 48 years of service. We'll find out a little bit more. I know Ross and several of the other, several folks from the library here, Richard Wells, who was our library director and a former Randolph County manager. He preceded Mr. Johnson in that position. And so they're going to be doing this. We'll have a little clock presentation for Linda ourselves. So I want to ask the commissioners to join us out front. And then Ross, if you want to come forward to do the honors.
Linda is going to sit shyly on the front row while I read through this, and then she'll come up. I bet I've said that more often than anything else during my time as library director. I've said it almost every day, sometimes many times a day, often to will. Linda Shirley retired on November 30th after 48 years with the library, 47 years as a Randolph County employee, and 45 years at the helm of the library business office. She's been the wizard behind the scenes who has enabled our libraries and librarians to offer the high level of service that we do. Anytime a money matter arose, or a colleague needed to know something about our financial operations, or an enterprising staff member needed funding for a special project, Linda knew the answer. And we had her retirement reception at the library last week. And amidst all the cake and cupcakes and well wishers, she was standing there telling our Randallman librarian, Donna Tooms, how to handle a certain kind of invoice. Linda grew up in Myersdale, Pennsylvania, and started her career with the U.S. Information Agency in Washington, D.C. It was there that she met her future husband Frankie Shirley, who was serving in the U.S. Army. Frankie was from Ashboro, and she and Frankie settled here. In 1975, through the Comprehensive Employment Training Act program, CETA program, Linda joined the staff of the Ashboro Public Library, working in the circulation department and later in the children's room. She was the last, she is the last current staff member hired by the legendary library director, Charles Anna Fox. After a year, Linda was offered the opportunity to become a regular library employee. In 1978, she was made secretary to the librarian and bookkeeper, and in short order was managing the business affairs of the library. It's a role in which she has excelled and a job that she has defined and refined through four of the five library directors with whom she has served. The library is a county agency, obviously, but we operate in collaboration with seven municipalities. We receive state and federal funding and share programs with local nonprofits. Linda managed those multiple sources of revenue and multiple agreements and accounted for expenditures in dozens, maybe hundreds of library funds. She developed our annual budget, assembled performance measures for the county, prepared our annual report to the state library, and managed personnel transactions and files. She was always on the lookout for economies and efficiencies and found innovative ways to meet library needs. And she was astute at identifying win-win organizational realignments that enabled staff to excel. The experience she gained during her career provided her with a big picture view of the operations of the library in the county, and she passed this insight along to managers and staff throughout her career and throughout the county's seven library branches. Her wisdom made her an invaluable advisor to a succession of library directors. She is widely respected among her colleagues in county government and is seen as a role model. She possesses an irreplaceable wealth of the library's institutional memory, going back nearly half a century, during which time she has blazed a behind-the-scenes trail of excellent library service for Randolph County. Now that she's retired, Linda will travel, get her house in order, and spend time with her grandchildren and her family, who are filling up a row tonight, if not more. In the, in the going on 37 years I've worked at the library, Linda has been a constant in my career, the glue that holds the library together. And I know, I know that her successor, our new business manager, Ally Dixon, will ably fill her shoes. But I also know that when some complex situation arises, or some confounding situation arises, my colleagues and I will deeply miss no longer being able to ask Linda. So Linda, now you have to come forward. And the chairman will present you with the, the clock.
(inaudible) There's no way we should remain as strong as our citizens. I got a lot of good work over the place in town, in the whole county. And y'all did it to make that. You built it, you served the public, helped us to spread it, and then the other units about is about the county. And you set a mark that regard as all that we made a benefit from your efforts. So we have a clock. A great appreciation to Linda Shirley, in recognition of 47 years of service, December the 4th, 2023, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. This is a, is made from the tree that's there in front of the courthouse. And that's sort of the top of that tree. So we give that to you, and you clock.
Linda, you don't, you don't get to sit down yet. You have to stay here for one more minute. I'd like to call on former library director and retired county manager, Richard Wells, retired library director Suzanne Tate, and Ralph Hardison, Chair of the Randolph County Public Library Board of Trustees, for a special presentation.
To follow up on what Commissioner Frye said, Chairman Frye, a couple things that Ross didn't mention. Linda worked with all five different county managers in this county in her career, and five different library directors. And we figured that she probably deserved a six-foot-tall gold cup for that. But since, in lieu of not being able to do that, her son Chad and Ross got in touch with the governor of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, and recommended her for the Order of the Longleaf Pine. After seeing her resume, I think he signed off in about one minute. And so Linda, I'd like to read to you this, which is the highest honor a citizen of North Carolina can receive from the governor. Roy Cooper, Governor, proposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Linda Shirley. I do by these presents confer the Order of the Longleaf Pine, with the rank of embaster extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose a following North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here is to the land of the longleaf pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong go great. Here is to down home, the old North State.
And before I do that, I know that our district attorney, Andy Gregson, is here, along with our Sheriff Greg Seabolt. And they're going to have the second item on our agenda tonight. And there's a lot of distinguished folks over here in that group. And I'm going to let Sheriff Seabolt do a proper introduction for those folks when we get to that point on the agenda. But, but we do welcome all of you, to all of you for being a part of our agenda here tonight. So our first item is a reorganization of our board. And the first item is elect a chairman for a one-year term. And I will turn it over to county manager for that process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the first position is for chairman of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners for the next year. And I will open that for nominations.
I will nominate Chairman Frye for the position.
Okay, Chairman Frye has been nominated for the position of chairman. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it is unanimous. Mr. Chairman, congratulations.
Thank you. And I, I thank this board, not just for this action, this immediate action, but we've had, we've had eventful the last four years here in this county. Most of it's been, been for the good. We've gone through some issues together. And the board has stayed together and stayed on the course in that process. We're going through transition. We just recognized Linda for 40, 48 years with the library, 47 years as, as a employee. December the 31st of this year, Mr. Johnson will be retiring after 48 years with Randolph County. And I, I believe you were a CETA employee.
Yes.
I think Hal and Frank Willis are, the first manager that I had when I came, were both CETA employees as well. So they've served us well over all these years. But Hal will be retiring, and there'll be more said about that. We'll do a more proper recognition for Hal at our January meeting, for all the issues, all the things that he's brought us through in getting us to this point tonight. But I thank the board, I thank the citizens, the citizens that are watching us on Facebook and YouTube tonight from home, all the citizens of Randolph County. It's a great county. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to raise our children. And neighbors love neighbors and look after neighbors. And we do these things together. And I know Sheriff Johnson, you've seen a little ruckus down in your county, and just over the weekend, between schools and county commissioners. We don't have that here. We don't give them everything they ask for, but they take it with appreciation, and the county benefits from it. But it's just great to work our other departments that are represented here tonight. They're all such a part of delivering the services to these citizens of Randolph County. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to do that. And I thank you personally, and I thank you on behalf of this board. So our next item is a vice chairman, currently Mr. Allen, Commissioner Allen. And it'd be my honor to nominate David for another term as our vice chairman. Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, no. And it is approved five to nothing. So the next is appointment of our county attorney, Mr. Ben Morgan. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move that Ben Morgan is our board attorney.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. And it's approved unanimously. Next is a clerk to our board, Dana Crisco, as our current board. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
And a second, by Commissioner Allen. Those that say aye, all in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed? Item E.
Chairman, chairman. Is it okay to do the rest of them at one time?
Yeah, we, I'm going to do, we have to do Ginny Parks.
Okay, and then we can do the others. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
A question. So do I have a motion for Ginny Parks, who is the deputy clerk to our board?
Make that motion.
All right, do I have a second? I'll second that. Those in favor will say aye. Aye. They're appointed. So recommendation is from item F through S, which is the various boards and committees that each commissioner sits on, will remain unchanged. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I have a second from Commissioner Allen. Those in favor will say aye. Aye. And they are approved. Okay, next is our public comment period. Madam Clerk, do we have any signed up? I'll ask our attorney to read the rules for our public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing, before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation. Mr. Chairman, I think also Madam Clerk informed me that there may be some confusion. We have a public comment period and then, and...
This is for just the public comment period. If you're here tonight to speak on, during a public hearing for the noise ordinance, the proposed noise ordinance, that will be separate from this public hearing. This is just from the general public, under the rules that the attorney has just presented. So if anyone signed up, but you hear about the noise ordinance, you'll wait until we have that public hearing on our agenda, under the agenda item. Okay? So...
Ross Lackey?
Appreciate the time to speak this evening. My name is Ross Lackey. Oh, I'll pause for a second. Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ross Lackey. I recently moved to Randolph County about a little over a year ago. What brought us here was a business opportunity down in Seagrove. We've had the opportunity to start a cafe down there. We've been open, we've had eight business days open, and we're very grateful for, for the support we've gotten from the community and the chance to do business here. We reside on a small farm in Wynton. If anybody know, if any of y'all know the area, you know, I'm preaching to choir. It's an amazing place. We've got two young girls. We're in school at elementary school and also in town here in Ashboro. I've had the opportunity to live in different parts of the state. I was in South Carolina for a bit. I saw Davidson explode while I was in school there in the 2000s. I saw the growth of High Point University in Guilford County in the early 2010s. I then ran a farm down in Lancaster, South Carolina, and I saw Charlotte explode down 521 into Lancaster County. And a couple years, spent a couple years down in Norwood in South Stanley County. So I saw, I was living in that water project y'all might have heard about, where they're bringing Lake Tillery to Monroe. We lived in that construction zone for about two years. So just wanted to introduce myself, communicate some of my experience, and say I understand y'all are taking action tonight on some funding for some water and sewer studies, or some capabilities to improve the area. And I just wanted to say I appreciate the attention, the energy that's being put into this. I appreciate the work from all the public officials. I've had the opportunity to attend some meetings down there in Seagrove. There's some hardworking people that want to do good for the community, and I appreciate y'all taking the time and energy to enable our community to do well for the future. Development is, and change is crazy. I've seen it happen in a lot of places in the area. I know everybody knows here it's coming, and we can, you know, it's a blessing or a curse. And I appreciate y'all's time and energy to, you know, use this opportunity and grow the county how we want to. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ross. I would comment, Ross used to be a little fella. He played on my grandson's soccer team, and they were about seven and eight years old. So, and his dad and I are good friends, so glad to have them as landowners and businesspersons in our county. Thank you, Ross. All right, who's next?
David Essick.
My name's David Essick. I'm a professional licensed land surveyor here in North Carolina. I've contacted most of you with this issue, so I think you're aware of what I'm here to talk about.
Mr. Essick, do you mind pulling the microphone?
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. I think you may know what I'm here to talk about. As licensed land surveyors, we are held to high standards by the state, by general statutes, and by part of the administrative code. North Carolina statute, General Statute 4730 has to do with our recording of plots in registered deeds offices across North Carolina. North Carolina Statute, General Statute 4730, F11C, specifies types of surveys. There are several types of surveys, subdividing land, divisions of land, recombinations of land, putting land back together, recombining pieces of land. And a lot of times, there are existing parcel surveys, where we survey a piece of land that we're not changing any streets, changing any property lines, changing anything about the land. We're just recording a up-to-date description, up-to-date survey of the monuments found around this property, and, and just an up-to-date record of the plat. North Carolina General Statute 4730 specifies how we have to record these plats, and who signs off on these plats, and what happens before we record these plats. In the case of subdivisions, recombinations, those plats go before review officers selected by you guys in the county. And those review officers have a set of checklists that specify, that specify a list of what they're looking for on our plats. It also, in 4730, says that existing parcel surveys and a couple other minor surveys that you're not going to see very often do not go before a review officer. And it goes as far as to say, if all other provisions are read, nothing shall prevent the surveyor from recording this at a registered deeds office. My issue is that we have been prevented from recording those plats without a review officer signature here in Randolph County. It's been an ongoing issue. I contacted most of you six years ago about this, 2018, about this issue, and have asked our registered deeds, Ms. Krista Lowe, to seek guidance, seek clarification on this, find out what's going on. I haven't, that hasn't happened. I have reached out to North Carolina Secretary of State's office, who oversees how the registered deeds run their offices, recommend how they run their offices, on multiple occasions. And they have, on multiple occasions, said that it's being done wrong here in Randolph County, that we should not be required to get these review officer signatures on these plats. I have presented all of you with letters, slideshows, a slideshow from the Secretary of State's office, where after presenting them with this issue to you, they highlighted in red the part of the general statute on their slides that they presented to the registered deeds and her staff.
Mr. Essick, when did you provide that to everybody?
I provided an email, I provided an email yesterday to all, to all the... I have copies over here also.
Okay. I just heard several of them saying that they haven't received that.
Okay, I've emailed it a number of times. So, like I say, they, they went to the trouble of highlighting in red and presenting it to all the registered deeds, and here's a letter from them saying such that they did so, that they presented to all the registered deeds and said, hey, you can't do this. You can't require these surveyors to go get something they're not supposed to get on these plats. And yet, as recently as this week, Ms. Lowe has rejected our plats and said, no, we're not taking it without a review officer signature. Upon asking her on multiple occasions, hey, why are you doing this? Where are you seeing this in what she stated to be a county ordinance? She hasn't been able to provide me with that. She provided me with a reference to a subdivision ordinance that was probably more than 15 years old, that's not even in the subdivision, we don't have a subdivision ordinance anymore. We've got a unified development ordinance. She also pointed to Mr. Johnson and said that when he was planning director, he told her to not accept these plats without a review officer signature. I'm not here to ask you to change something in the UDO. The UDO doesn't need changing. There's nothing in the UDO that requires us to get a review officer signature on these plats. It's not there. It's claimed to be there, it's not there. I'm asking you to figure out what's going wrong. I'm asking you, if you can't figure out what's going wrong, to figure out for five, for seven years, surveyors have been, or longer, surveyors have been told to go get these signatures on these plats, when Secretary of State's office, our licensing board, Council for our licensing board, I have a write-up here from the, a page here, from the guide for registered deeds written by Charles Zipzak with the UNC School of Government, where he specifies the very same thing, that these plats are not to be sent to review officers. And yet, Ms. Lowe has still rejected our plats, given all this data for years, still rejected our plats, has done nothing to go on her own and find why we're doing something in Randolph County that other counties aren't doing, and why we're going directly against the state. So that's why I'm here.
Okay, that's your, that's time, Mr. Essick. I, I can, if, if I may have a point of...
Can I hand you all copies of this?
Sure, please, yeah, if you'd hand those up. If, if I, if I could address this, Mr. Chairman, obviously, as the county attorney and as a big part of my private practice is dealing in residential and commercial real estate, I'm at the registered deeds all the time. I have been contacted by Mr. Essick in the past, and he has expressed this to me. I know Mr. Tanner, I think I saw him earlier tonight, he's here as well, he's expressed this. I'll be happy to look into this issue. I know this is an issue that other counties have been dealing with. I will tell you that this is, this is not a problem with Ms. Lowe. This is, this is not something that Ms. Lowe is doing incorrectly. I'm not exactly sure that the Secretary of State is the entity that oversees this. I think it is correct to communicate with the Institute of Government to get an opinion. But I'll look into that. I'll, this would also be a good opportunity to talk to our new planning director, and because that's... because that's where these areas kind of merge, and we can put our heads together. And I'll be in touch with Mr. Essick and Mr. Tanner as well to, to come up with a plan on how we will, will deal with this. I know personally that other counties are dealing with this as well. Mr. Essick called me last week, and I'm in the process of contacting some of our adjoining counties to see how they're dealing with this, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, you have our attention, and we will follow the process and correct if it is wrong and make sure that we're, we are following proper procedures. Thank you again. All right, who's next?
David Fernandez.
I'm David Fernandez. I'm mayor down in Seagrove. I noticed tonight on your agenda, you have an agenda item concerning the Seagrove Ula Water District, and before that happened, I thought it would be worthwhile to talk to several of the commissioners here that I have not talked to yet, to try and bring you up to date on some of the issues that we face down in Seagrove. In the last several years, the town has raised almost $3 million to renovate the Lux Cannery. The first phase was completed a couple of years ago, and the Thompson Exhibition Hall is, is booked almost constantly. We finished the second phase upstairs. We have the lobby in place. We have the bathroom complex in place, and we can't hang a single fixture in that bathroom until we get extra capacity in the sewer, in the sewer district. So we need to expedite this somehow. In downtown Seagrove, we have the train depot where we have now funding to be able to renovate it completely and put in public restrooms in downtown Seagrove. We can't do that. We don't have any capacity. Even though the funding's available, we're ready to go, nothing can happen without capacity. Right now, half of that capacity in the Seagrove Ula Water District is taken up by the visitor centers, not even in downtown Seagrove. Mr. Lackey just came up and mentioned that he opened a cafe in downtown Seagrove. He had to put in a sewer system. He had to put in a septic system. He couldn't attach to the district because there's no capacity. So I think that it's really important that you all realize this is an issue that has to be addressed, it has to be addressed quickly, it has to be addressed completely. It can't be a Band-Aid, it has to be a solution. Anything the town can do to help you all with that, we would be more than willing to do, but I would really appreciate all the efforts that you all have done in the past and all the efforts that I'm sure you're going to do in the future to address this issue. Seagrove's ready to explode. We're ready to make things happen. If you're not growing, you're dying, and the only way we can grow is if we have sewer capacity, and this has to be addressed. Thank you for your time. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, David Fernandez, and I know Commissioner McDowell and I have attended several meetings and through this process for over two years to get to this point, and there is an item tonight to fund an engineering study for a package plant down there because the existing wastewater plant is not capable of serving anything else in Seagrove. It's way over capacity now, which is a different issue than what we're dealing with, but this is intended to address that, so thank you for your comments.
Karen Sands.
Do I get extra travel time? I just had my knee replaced on Thursday, so I'm a little unsteady. Thank you for letting me speak. I'll try to be brief. My name is Karen Sands. I've lived in Randolph County for almost 35 years, raised my children here. I'm a business owner here, my husband's a business owner here. We love Ashboro, we love Randolph County, it's a beautiful place. You guys do a great job. You know, it doesn't come without its little issues here and there, and maybe to y'all, this might be a little issue, but this has become kind of my mission. Quick story, my neighbor had somebody working in her yard, and he put up a little sign in their yard after he did the job. Great, you know, you're allowed to do that, you got permission to do it, but then it ended up at this end of my street, and that end of my street, and then in the cul-de-sac. And I was like, why is he putting these signs all in my neighborhood? And then I started noticing them everywhere else. And I do advertising myself, and so I drive delivery to my advertisers, and I reached out to County Commissioner Ken Kidd, and he sent me a thing that said, it was from the DOT Facebook page that says, stop, don't do this. Don't put signs in DOT right-of-way's, and it's General Statute GS 136-32, I think. And so I thought, well, I started noticing them everywhere. If you go to 220 Business and 311, there were 25 signs there. There are now none, except for one that I can't reach because it's a roofing guy, and they usually put them up about 12 or 15 feet with roofing nails. I reached out to code enforcement in the city, I reached out to code enforcement in the county, I reached out to Sheriff Seabolt's office, I reached out to DOT, I've reached out to, because the utility poles are, some are Spectrum, some are Duke Energy, some are REMC, so they're all, you don't know who owns what, but these roofing people are, they're going up 12 and 15 feet with roofing nails, and you can't get those down. But I have, this is out at, like, Iron Mountain Road, I think there were about 15 or 20 signs plus trash. The road people can't get up there and mow. I'm thinking I'm going to get snake bit, but I have literally, and my husband doesn't want people to know this because I am a business owner and he doesn't want people retaliated, since July 27th, I personally have picked up over 1,000 signs. And they're in my carport, and I recycle, and I reached out to Sheriff Seabolt, and I said, can we get the prisoners out picking these up? Well, they have metal jabby things, so that's probably not a good idea. And I thought maybe I could make phone calls, and I maybe misunderstood, I thought he said I could go make phone calls from the sheriff's department because then it wouldn't be from my phone number, so I had a whole list of the biggest offenders, which were like Dish Network and Dry Vent Cleaning and Obamacare and Hughes Net, you know, Pressure Washing and all that kind of stuff. And so I showed up with my little, you know, script that I was going to read, and they said, oh, no, I think you misunderstood. So I've personally been making and texting some of these people, and some are like, oh, I didn't know. And, and other people were like, well, you know, forget you.
Ms. Sands, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. So I want to know, one, is there something I can do? Number two, these, it's illegal to put them on utility poles in Greensboro, at Winston, but not in Randolph County or not in Ashboro. They haven't given me a statute. They said there's a statute 14-156, but it doesn't say anything about putting signs on utility poles. So I want to know, can I make phone calls from the county? Can I get help somehow? Can we, the people that I've talked to at the county code enforcement, they're like, we're short-staffed, we don't have time, but if I can pick up 1,000 signs, I can do the rest. I just need to know what to do. And if we can make a law that it's illegal to put them on utility poles, that would be helpful, because I know, we had to take our Christmas lights off utility poles last year, they told us we couldn't put them on there. So legally, I want to know what we can do, what I can do if we can get help.
They just, it's like they, they breed on them. I mean, they put up two or three, and then there's 10, and then there's 20, and then there's 30.
Yes, and then I'm so proud of myself that I've cleaned an entire area. In four hours, I picked up 150 signs from Iron Mountain Road down through Bear Creek, Bennett Seagrove, up to Piscataut Covered Bridge, back up to Foxfire. 150 signs. That was just my first thing, and I thought, this is ridiculous.
Thank you. We will pass that along to our...
It's kind of frustrating, I mean, I thought the utility pole was illegal statewide. I mean, with the law enforcement guys, I don't know.
They're not.
But I guess it's by county or by municipality, but...
I've always thought you couldn't put them in the DOT right of way.
You can't. But the guy at DOT doesn't really seem to care, and he doesn't seem to want to enforce it, and to me, I think it could be charged as littering at $250 fine, and if we start fining them, that gets the county some money, and it can stop the problem.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be careful. Okay. Thank all of you for your participation in our public comment period tonight. These things will be taken seriously and in proper direction to get them to folks that can address the problem and give us some advice. So with that, we close the public comment period. We have our consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to pull out separately?
I don't want to pull anything out. I just want to make a comment on item N. For people that may not have noticed it, Barry Bunning has been serving as a voting member of the Randolph County Planning Board, and he no longer lives in the, he's in Randolph County, but he is in Ashboro. So he has come off that board, and I just want to publicly thank him for his service because that's not an easy board to serve on, it's very time-consuming, and half the people who come to every meeting leave upset because they didn't get what they wanted. So I'd just like to thank Barry for serving in that capacity. I would also like to note that Brandon Hedrick is going to be moving in as a voting member, and he has been serving as an alternate for some time now, so has done an excellent job, so he will be moving into that spot. And the commissioners will be talking about, you know, what direction to go now, but Reed Pell is the chair of that board, and he has suggested that we perhaps look at having two alternates because we have so much going on and we can't afford for somebody to, to miss and for there not be someone there to vote. So we'll be looking at that going forward. But I did want to thank Barry publicly for the work he's done on that board.
We will be looking for two alternates, and they have to live in the county. They cannot live in the corporate city limits of any of our municipalities. So keep that in mind, and let us know if anybody's just dying to serve on the planning and zoning board. All right, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we accept it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on consent agenda? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those no, consent agenda is completed. Our first item under new business is to consider a bridge renaming for W. David and Sarah Steadman. Honorable Don Vaughn is with us tonight. He was a former employee of Mr. Steadman's, and he's practiced law in this very courtroom.
Aye, in this very courtroom.
And I would like to say that with him is Tom Callaway, who is Mr. Steadman's son-in-law. And I met with him last week with some other gentlemen on a development property, development idea they have here in the county, so got to meet Tom last week. I've known Don for a long time, so he's got the floor down.
Long time. Congratulations on your reelection as chairman. I'll be very brief. I'm Don Vaughn. I was fortunate enough to be vice president of Steadman Corporation and Steadman Foundation for a number of years, and we just ask you to support the North Carolina Department of Transportation Resolution to name the two bridges off of 220, they had the elephants on them, after David and Sarah Steadman. They were great people. They loved this community. Their handy work goes all the way from the North Carolina Zoo to the Sarah Steadman Center at Duke University, and we believe it would be fitting, and I speak on behalf of the many thousands of employees that Steadman Corporation had. You're speaking on behalf of the family, as son-in-law. We just encourage you to support it. DOT has already passed it there, and the local entity always has to pass a resolution. Ask you to support that resolution.
Our county office building is the former office of Steadman Corporation.
I was a lawyer on that building. I remember it well.
It was passed along to the county longer than you think. It still looks like a new building, but that, that was 35, over 35 years ago.
It was all, I started with Mr. Steadman. I was 26 years old, a new lawyer out of Wake Forest Law School. I'm 72 years old now. Mr. Steadman died at 99 and a half. I talked to him every day for the last 20, 30 years of his life. Wonderful man. Sarah Steadman was great. We just ask you to endorse the NC DOT resolution.
Right. I did notice, in reading the literature, going back to the land purchases for the MAGA site, some other land purchases that we've done as a county, the property for the North Carolina Zoo, and Mr. Steadman was instrumental in doing that, was bought for $100 an acre.
And...
I don't know if that was all of it, but that's what they were offering, was 100, that's what's in part of the narrative of the request for this naming, $100 an acre.
What a wonderful gentleman he was, what a wonderful woman Miss Steadman was.
I don't know if he was subsidizing it, but...
That was right before my time.
Yeah. All right. Do I have any questions? Maxton, that's down your area, I think.
It is indeed. Correct.
Any other questions on the gentleman? Tom, did you have something you wanted to say?
Just to say thank you on behalf of my wife, Nancy Jane Steadman Callaway. She couldn't be here, she's got a health issue, but my father-in-law loved Randolph County.
She did.
He helped locate the site for the zoo. As a child, he walked through all the, traveled around Randolph County, knew the property well, supported it in the legislature, put his money where his mouth is, and cared very much. And he would not want this honor that you are considering bestowing upon him. He was a very humble man.
He would not want us up here.
And I thank you for your consideration, all of you.
All right. Any other comments, like commissioners, or I'll entertain a motion.
I've got a comment, and then I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
None of you here know all the, all the exploits of David Steadman, but one thing I will tell you tonight, as a kid of 10 years old, I, he found that there were Indian relics and Indian lore in and around the, in around the Caraway Creek and Urah River area. At 10 years old, I was traipsing around on Caraway Bank, and Urah River Bank with Mr. Steadman, myself and him. And I still remember that day. He was such a nice gentleman and was looking for anything that showed Indian relics and having traipses around those areas for, at 10 years old. I knew where some things were and some things weren't, but I always thought, he took his time and effort to look, to see if there was anything that was relevant to that, and there were, there were actually arrowheads and pounding rocks, I guess you call them, that were there, and he identified what those were. I don't know whatever happened to it all, but anyway, it was a kind of a neat thing that, that at 10 years old, he'd be out traipsing around on a Saturday afternoon with this kid that he didn't know who it was.
Amazing.
Very good.
And we'll say thank you for letting me be one of your opioid attorneys.
Yes, sir.
I hope you enjoy the recovery we did. Hope that helped a lot of people.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. I'll make the motion that we consider renaming the bridge the W. David and Sarah Steadman Bridge.
Excellent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion or questions by either of these gentlemen or part of the board? Comments? Good, good comments there, Maxton. Those in favor of the motion to approve, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, no, and it's approved.
Thanks so much.
And hope we get it started very quickly. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Okay, next is the Invictus Report. I'm going to call on Sheriff Seabolt. We had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to meet with this group, this is about this issue. It's sadly, it's more prevalent than we want to believe in our state and in our community, and so, Sheriff, thank you, and I'll let you recognize these folks that are with us here tonight.
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to congratulate you, Chairman Frye, and you, Vice Chairman Allen, for being reappointed. Before I start the introductions, I'd like to explain to you that this program is dear to my heart as it is the others here before me. It's designed to combat the human trafficking and exploitation of children, and who I'd like to introduce first is Terry here on my right, Terry Johnson, Alamas, Sheriff of Alamas County, Andrew Gregson, who we all know, Sam Hicks, Ray Dawson, who is our detective. He's also the director of... Hold on. Uh, he's also the director of, uh, hold on one second, I've got it. Lannan Rescue, he's the director of Domestic Relations, Lannan Rescue, and Sam is the founder of that group. We got Joe Behringer, which is back here. He's with Homeland Security. Kevin Routen, who is here, SBI, Special Agent in Charge. We got Justin Trogdon, um, Zach Neef, Homeland Security, Brittany Beck, Tracy Turner, and Detective Hargrove. We have a huge offensive line here to protect me, so...
Yes, sir. Welcome, everybody.
And what I would like, I'd like to go through the PowerPoint, and then I'm gonna ask Sheriff Johnson, District Attorney Andy Gregson, and maybe Founder Sam Hicks to say a few words.
Thank you.
If you don't mind. And it will be as brief as possible.
And we're glad to have Andre with us also.
In August of this year, our agency hosted Operation Child Predator. We worked with city, county, state, uh, federal entities to bring child predators to justice. This three-day operation brought light to the problem that we're looking at today. The Invictus Project, the number of cyber tips has increased immensely over the past four years. The Invictus Project will be a proactive effort to protect our children from online predators. In August of this year, as I stated earlier, we performed a three-day operation with local, state, federal law enforcement agencies. The operation consisted of online chats with many predators from North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia. The operation showed that predators would not hesitate to drive long distances with the intentions of sexually abusing our children. This project is a focus-driven proactive approach to bring attention to this problem that law enforcement has been unable to prioritize due to the lack of manpower and budgeting. The increase in the number of cyber tips through social media, cyber tips have tripled in number since 2019, forty-nine thirty in 2019, nine thousand three hundred and eight in 2020, and in 2021, we had twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty. In 2022, we're, we had eighteen thousand, uh, which is high. And this year, 2023, uh, Special Agent Routen stated that he expects over twenty-seven thousand tipps coming in. The Invictus Project is made up of Randolph County Sheriff's Office, Alamance County Sheriff's Office, Davison County Sheriff's Office, and Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Simmons, uh, had a parade to go to tonight in his county, and Sheriff Kimbrough, uh, had a earlier obligation that he had to meet. He did show up last month.
Yeah.
Additional agency support, Homeland Security, North Carolina State Bureau of Investigations, Randolph County District Attorney's Office, and Lannan Rescue. The SBI expects cyber tips to exceed twenty-seven thousand as 2023 year ends. The number of ICAC investigators in North Carolina, uh, we only have two hundred and fifty. And if you do your math, that's a hundred and eight cases for each investigator. The investigators have other cases that are not specifically ICAC cases. The project places a priority on these types of cases. The project will utilize methodical approach to investigate cyber tips based upon sovereignty factors, working in concert with investigative partners to strategically use available resources. The project will utilize a victim-centered approach to forensic examinations of evidence to uncover human trafficking elements of cases that would otherwise go unreported. And this is more of a proactive approach to this criminal behavior. Instead of sitting back, waiting on the crime to be committed and, um, affecting these kids for the rest of their life, we're hitting it at the head. We're trying to get involved initially with the predator, and, uh, we can arrest him with the information and evidence that we, uh, have on him. Victor's, victim-centered is admittedly an umbrella term to use to describe a variety of means and methods, however, is best described in this concept of operations as systematic focus on the needs and concerns of a victim to ensure the compassionate and sensitive delivery of services in nonjudgmental manners. In addition to fielding cyber tips, the project will focus on daily undercover operations to search for online child predators and develop, develop operational plans to interdict preeditorial searches for child victims. The Invictus Project will be the first of its kind in the state of North Carolina to use this full-time. Proactive model partnering with surrounding agencies as a force multiplier and using tactical apprehension methods to interdict child predators. The Invictus Project means unconquerable or undefeated. It is courage in the face of death, holding on to one's dignity despite of the indignities life places before us. The home of this project will be here in Randolph County, Ashboro, which is centrally located in the state. With an interstate and several U.S. highways running through Randolph County, it opens the door for this type of behavior, uh, which forced labor, sexual slavery, or commercial sexual exploitation. North Carolina is ranked number nine in the nation in human trafficking, with sex trafficking being the most common. Operations, the cornerstone of this initiative will be the forensic lab, which will handle the anticipated volume of evidence generated from the number of active investigations. The lab will be designed around five total forensic workstations with licensing for Selbrite, Premium, Graykey, Griffey, Magnet, Axiom, Clearview, Forensic Toolkit, and Monolith. The project will leverage the partnerships with nongovernmental organizations to garner these tools as a part of the sustainability design. The third component of the initiative would be the education and training of officers on topics centered around cyber investigations, human trafficking, child exploitation, undercover chat operations, tactics, use of force, and general legal updates. The design thought is that of the project is brought to fruition, it would have subject matter experts in a central location capable of sharing investigative techniques and lessons learned with the greater law enforcement community. We will create a project through investigative partnerships and MOUs, forge, uh, nongovernmental, uh, officer's partnership as an alternative funding source. Create a forensic lab capable of operating at a pace equal to the investigative tempo and create a training component for the initiative that will conduct quarterly training through the North Carolina Community College System. Also create a central location for the project to operate from and for a state-of-the-art forensic lab. Sustainability planning, the partnership will leverage funding from the leading NGO, Lannan Rescue, to ensure annual funding is available for reoccurring fees associated with lab and task force. Individual salaries, person, personally assigned equipment and agency equipment such as vehicles will be the responsibility of the partnering agencies. The task force will assume responsibility for task force-related equipment, licensing, data, associated needs, and workspace and/or requirements. Randolph County will serve as the primary fiduciary for the project with oversight from the executive board comprised of partners who will collectively seek annual grant funding and state appropriations funding to combine funding resources from respective partnering agencies, additional funding opportunities from Lannan Rescue and their affiliates for further development and expansions. Data collection plan, the project coordinator will develop a strategy to collect data from the partnering agencies, collect, analyze, and report quarterly project statistics, engage in a continuous process of measuring, tracking, and reporting progress toward program goals and documenting resources. Share data, progress reports, performance measures, and project goals with all partners, and we will meet, um, as, at least quarterly, uh, to begin with. Collectively establish the performance measures associated with unidentified implementation activities and case assignments. And key points learned from the Operation Child Predator. We arrested nineteen child predators who traveled to Randolph County to have sex with, with our children here. One predator believed he would have had sex with an autistic twelve-year-old child who was also nonverbal. These arrests did not account for the predators who made plans to come to Randolph County with those same intentions but not traveled during the dates of the operation. Those predators were arrested in their respective jurisdictions as far away as Illinois. The operation proved that child sexual abuse, exploitation, and trafficking are much more prevalent than most people know or are willing to, uh, admit. The success of this operation was a result of law enforcement shifting to a proactive posture and pursuing the child predator instead of waiting until the child has been victimized and then reported to law enforcement. Key points, child predators are impossible to identify by looking at them. They go to our churches, they work in our schools, they perform services in our community, and many are in positions of trust and authority. They're willing to go to great lengths to travel great distances in the middle of the day to prey on our children. They hunt our children where they play and socialize, their phones. Today's generation is most vulnerable in our history. They're often left alone and unattended to their bedrooms where their parents think they are safe, but they're on their phone, uh, they're on their mobile devices, leaving them unprotected and unaware in the hunting grounds of these predators. The most effective way to protect our children is to hunt these predators through proactive cover and pure operations. We are responsible for seeking out the many sex predators that are more than willing to come to our county to harm, molest, and sexually abuse our children. We must do all we can with the resources available to protect our children. When predators commit perverse and heinous crimes against children, those children are affected for the rest of their lives. These effects impact every aspect of their well-being. We therefore must take every effort to prevent and deter these predators from abusing, exploiting, and trafficking them. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. The cost, the Randolph County Sheriff's Office requesting seven hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars to initiate this project. These funds will be utilized for two additional detectives, two civilian positions, forensic lab equipment, and office renovations and lab licensing fees they provided. The anticipated start was January, um, due to it being Human Trafficking Awareness Month, but it possibly will be later now. The total cost needed for the remaining six months of 2023, 2024 fiscal year comes up to seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. That's build and design of Task Force Office, which is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Forensic workstations, a hundred thousand five hundred and seventeen. The staffing startup cost, a hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-eight. And the vehicle and equipment, a hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-two for the people that we hire. New detectives' uniform and equipment, fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two, and lab licensing fees, uh, as startup would be a hundred and nine thousand sixty-three dollars. The annual lab licensing fees, um, would be a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and Lannan Rescue has already committed to paying up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those fees. And our Randolph County Sheriff's Office, um, amount would be three hundred and twelve dollars, three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And that would be, uh, the most that we have figured. Does anybody have any questions in reference to the cost?
So the, the seven fifty-five would be a six-month cost?
Yes.
And...
And that would, and, we wouldn't have to worry about the, um, refurbishing, the office, that's a one-time cost. Um, we wouldn't have to worry about all the equipment, that's a one-time cost. But we do have to maintain the employees that we, we hire to man these labs.
The ongoing cost will be three hundred and twelve.
Yes.
After, after the first year.
And what I would also like to add is Alas, Alamance County Sheriff's Office, Davison County Sheriff's Office, Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, and SBI and Homeland Security, they're all involved. They're gonna be providing manpower also. We're looking at a five-day-a-week, some days, seven days-a-week operation. Uh, we're gonna have to stay on it, and that's why we need so much manpower. That's why it's very important that we collaborate with everyone up here to make sure we do this right. It's, the home base is gonna be Randolph County, yes, but we're gonna be working, this is gonna be a program that will benefit the whole state of North Carolina. And I'm sure other sheriff's offices east and west of us will take note and probably do the same thing that we're doing. We want to send a message out that they're not welcome here, as Alamance County has in the past. They only have nine or twelve, I think twelve ICAC cases pending. They have taken note what Sheriff Terry Johnson's done over there, the predators have. They don't make contact. They don't want to go to Alamance County because they know that they'll probably be arrested. So what I would like to do, I know Andy, uh, he's got an appointment at his home. I'd like to, for him to say a few words, if you don't mind.
So forgive me for my bluntness, but you, you know me, so I'm gonna cut right to the chase. This, this country, this state, and this county have a problem. It is the sexualization of our children. It's in our face, and we have an administration that has allowed the border to be open, and we've got by some estimates, many, many times more than a million children who have come across that border. Nobody knows where they are or where they're supposed to be. This is completely unacceptable, and it's up to us to do our job as much as we can on a local level. This is an outstanding program. I wouldn't be here if I had any issues with it because it's gonna result in significant resource drain in my office. Uh, my ADAs have been to training with the sheriff's office. Um, we were there during the recent operation, and they have, uh, they've included us at every step. I, I think it is done correctly. It is proactive. It's something we need to be doing. Randolph County is not exempt in the number of sexual assault cases, uh, on the internet and in person in this county. Uh, I speak quite often on this issue, and it's, it's a disappointment to me, but we have to stop making excuses for this, whether it's your grandfather, or your uncle, your brother, your husband, whatever, it's gotta end. And if, whether you end it or not, we're going to prosecute you. Now, some people have said, well, there were no victims in this latest operation. The only reason there were no actual victims is they were talking to cops. Had there been children on the other end of that internet connection, we would have had a slew of those victims. And so I fully support this. I commend the sheriff. They have done it correctly. They've done it in the way that is completely professional. We should be a leader in this area. I make no apologies for my stance on it, and I respectfully and humbly ask you to come alongside the sheriff and these other law enforcement agencies and, uh, the non-law enforcement agencies. Let's get this done. Let's make Randolph County a place where these predators are afraid to reach out and contact our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Next, I'd like, uh, Special Agent Routen, SBI.
My name's Kevin Routen. I'm a special agent in charge with the North Carolina State Bureau.
I'm a special agent in charge with the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation, Computer Crimes Unit, also the commander of the North Carolina Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. We have a couple hundred agencies across the state that do exactly what we're talking about, but this is the first of its kind that will be done in this manner. Usually, our partnerships consist of an agency having a detective, and usually that detective has many, many, many other cases that they're working. And so they, a very small amount of their time is dedicated to working internet crimes against children, even though that's one of the most horrific crimes that is occurring in our society. What I've seen here and what I, why I'm standing before you today is because of the prioritization that has been given by Sheriff Seabolt and the other sheriffs, as well as HSI, that while many agencies are backing away from this, I don't think it's any secret that law enforcement agencies across the country and throughout our state are short-staffed. And so constantly, I'm hearing from agencies that are saying, we we can't afford to put more people into this, we're having to pull people away from it, that this is taking priority here, and you are considering putting resources into this because the prevention aspect of this will save children's lives. It will save children from being traumatized in ways that they should never experience. And that won't happen without resources being poured into it. So I'm excited about what's happening here, the partnership that's occurring between these agencies. Glad that we get to be a part of it as a state, and looking forward to partnering on this. And I strongly urge you to, we all, we all talk about wanting to protect kids. I strongly urge you to actually take action to make meaningful steps to protect the children in this area.
Thank you, Kevin. I don't want to break order, but I'd like for Homeland Security, Mr. Behringer, Agent, Special Agent, say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Joe Behringer. I'm the resident agent in charge of the Greensboro Field Office for Homeland Security Investigations. I was here back during the summer, not for the entire time, but to see just the manner in which this operation was conducted, to echo what Kevin said and what the sheriff has said previously, even the DA. The professionalism, the amount of effort that was put into it from the respective officers operating in an undercover capacity to have to go through the most vile, disgusting, you cannot get your mind around how sick these conversations are. So for these ladies and gentlemen in law enforcement that have to endure this sick demeanor of these folks is just unbelievable testament to their their level of commitment to our children, to the future of our country, to the future of the the state, and obviously Randolph County. Homeland Security Investigations is committed to the cause. We have numerous trained special agents and task force officers that are dedicated to it, and we're happy to be a part of it. And anything we can do to assist, we will, and and we're thankful for the sheriff for taking a huge leap forward in this arena. So thank you.
Certainly, it's good to be here, see you, ladies and gentlemen. Like the sheriff said, this state is number nine in the nation in human trafficking. I've had the opportunity to go down on the border just about five weeks ago. You would be sick if you were down there seeing what we saw down there. There's a farm out there in Brooks County. They found a hundred and twenty-five skeletal remains. And what upset me more than anything, some of them, skeletal remains, if you let them out, wasn't that tall. Guess what that was, folks? That was children being brought here to be prostituted to society. In Alamance County, as the sheriff said, we, right now, I think we have seven cyber tips. You say, well, why don't you have more than that? Well, we went after these people and been going after them for a couple years. And word has got out, you don't go to Alamance County. And they wanted us to come to them, and we will with this task force. We're going wherever they want us to go with our people to take them in custody. And we owe it to our children for their safety. I know Davidson County had a individual that come down Davidson County, was supposed to get a little girl in Alamance, I don't know if you all remember, carried them back to Arkansas, and the law enforcement was able to identify the car. One of the officers got shot three times, but the little girl escaped. If she hadn't escaped, where would she be right now? Probably in her grave. And we have the responsibility, when we wear this badge and you sit in that seat, to try to protect our communities. These perps don't know boundaries. That's why I think it's wonderful that the sheriffs have got together and the federal and state agencies to go after these people, because I want to see the day that they will not want to come to Randolph County, Davidson County, Forsyth County, or Alamance County. And if they do, we've got a place for them. It's called the county jail or the federal jail. And this program that the sheriff has has put together here with other people, I'm telling you, will send a message to these rascals that we coming after you. You're not going to mess with our kids. And that's what we've got to do. And I have told the sheriff, I have pledged two people to work full-time down here, and anything else Sheriff Seabolt and he says, I'm going to try to see that he gets it. Because the idea is great, and the working relationship is magnificent here. We're going to make an impact on these perverts. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And Sam, if you would end it.
Sure. Thanks for having me here. I want to recognize what is this, how amazing this is. In 2022, I briefed twenty-three governors. I was part of a small team that briefed twenty-three governors and their chief of staff on the issue of CSAM child sexual abuse material happening in their in their states. The result of that was everybody didn't know what to do but have maybe a steering committee. I think Governor Lee jumped in, that's right, but in Tennessee. What you see here, I can just tell you, is so remarkable that these sheriffs are all together with SBI and Homeland, and everybody's going to work together in the ICAT department. This is incredible, okay? This is, this is absolutely amazing in how to tackle this, not just here, but across the nation, because I've seen other types of task force. I sit on the board for other task force. This is an incredible way to do it. It's it's affordable, it's grassroots, it's going to be, it's going to be effective, it's going to move the needle, okay? And that's why we're part of it. Lantern, we work internationally, we're more direct internationally than we are here. Here, we're just supporting these amazing men and women, okay? We're, we're, we're as excited about collaborating with them and learning from them and having our task force overseas learn what they do to repeat that even overseas. So we have to do something. The border has been brought up a couple of times. We have a task force in a couple of countries, one being Costa Rica. There's a caravan of seven thousand people. You know where they want to be? Right here. You know, the number one CSAM producer in the world. Last report I just saw from Nick Meck, it was, it was Mexico. So it's right at our door. And this program, and this, this is really, really an opportunity to not just do something here, guys, I'm telling you, this is going to be something the whole, the whole country is going to take notice of because it's going to be so effective, and it's going to be financially responsible, it's going to be good, you know? So Lantern's all in. We're in as a partner, not just financially, but we want to share and collaborate together. Not everybody knows Lantern. We're all former either law enforcement, SOF, or intelligence people, or, you know, we collaborate with Homeland quite a bit in different states and different countries. Country out of Shades are all our buddies, excuse me, Interpol, we have a great relationship with them. So we're excited about doing something domestically, and the vision of this is just, you know, Ray, Seabolt, you sheriffs, you guys, and just incredible. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I want to say one last thing. And, you know, God put this together, Jesus Christ. I got up with with Pastor Hicks. I had no idea who he was. I told him what I wanted to do. He was doing that same thing. I got up with Ray Dawson, who Montgomery County let go. He came to work for us. We don't pay him a dime, but he gave me so much intelligence on human trafficking. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to leave here until we give God credit for setting this whole thing up. And before we turn it over, I want Ray Dawson to get up here and and talk to you about what he has experienced in his short time in human trafficking. If you'll go ahead and and talk a little bit, Ray. I know he's a pastor.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't expecting this, but, you know, one of the things that when we set out to do this, and when I say do this, I mean, how do, how do we affect as as part of an international counterhuman trafficking organization, having a desire to have a effect in our own community, right? So that was a vision that Sam and I started to explore probably four or five years ago on the international front. You know, we see a lot of things. A lot of it is, is from a poverty perspective, where the exploitation of children and a lot of the crime and exploitation of the children has a big poverty component to it. When we started to get involved here domestically, there was a, you know, as far as hands-on offending, we saw a lot of the addiction component to it. And and we really were, were kind of exploring, like, how do we play in this arena? And and how do we become effective? And once I got exposed to the internet crimes against children and seeing about the online exploitation of our children and to seeing how vulnerable our children are in this, and not only, not only the vulnerability of our children, but also the shortcomings in the ability for manpower, resources that our local law enforcement are just lacking. And it's not their fault. They're doing everything they can, they just don't have the resources or the time to do it, or, excuse me, the resources or the manpower to do it. And so we decided that, hey, that's an area that we can play in, that's an area we want to commit our time and effort in. And so as I began to conduct these investigations as well as far as internet crimes against children, I have seen some just crazy things that I would have never imagined. You know, one case that I I can speak to was an incident where, just kind of to shape what this battle looks like, we had a grandfather that had a step-granddaughter. Step-granddaughter was about eleven years old. Step-granddaughter was abused when she was younger, so she started to exhibit promiscuous behavior when she was about eleven. So the family called a meeting, said, we're going to have a meeting. And so they talked about this. Grandfather found out about it. Grandfather then buys step-granddaughter a phone, unbeknownst to the parents, and started setting on online, fake online profiles, convincing this child to exploit herself sexually on the phone to grandfather. Well, the child, the step-grand, the step-grandchild did not live in close proximity to grandfather anymore, but he did have a biological granddaughter of the same age. And so who do you think got the hands-on offending? Because grandfather was exploiting his step-granddaughter but was sexually assaulting his biological granddaughter. And thank God, we were able to stand in the gap and and put this guy, you know, arrest him. And those are the type of crimes that this task force is looking to stand in the gap from, for, and to really shift law enforcement, because that was a reactive case. That, that incident had happened, it was reported to law enforcement, an investigation was conducted, and arrest was made. But the child had already been offended. What the focus of this task force is, is to shift from a reactive posture to a proactive posture and to actively hunt those that prey upon our children. So that we can stand in that gap before these kids are violated. And that's where my passion is, that's where my heart is. And I just thank the Lord that that I'm surrounded with professionals like the Sheriff Seabolt and the other sheriffs and and our partners with HSI and SBI that say, hey, you know what? We're, we're not going to stand and allow this to happen to our children anymore. And I just appreciate this opportunity. I am blessed beyond measure to be standing before you today and to be surrounded around people that want to put our children first. So thank you.
Ray, could you, while you're there, tell us a little bit about Lantern, so.
Well, how about if we have the founder tell you about Lantern? That'd be a lot, lot better.
We heard some of it, but I think the others.
We work internationally mostly. We collaborate with, usually MOUs with the Minister of Defense, Minister of Interior, Director Generals. We fall in place, we'll approach if there's a Homeland Office, we approach them, make sure their, their lanes of effort, that we support that, that, you know, we're not overstepping. We work in hand-in-hand. We're heavily staffed by people overseas. So we run the counterhuman trafficking task force in the countries that we're in. We see arrests and rescues almost every single day of the year. Some cases are long-time cases, like in the Caribbean, you know? One of the large cases that we had end of last year, took a hundred and fourteen agents, took all of my people, took, you know, a lot of training for the Attorney General in the Dominican Republic to arrest twenty-three people and rescue eighty-three girls from five different countries. We also run the Recovery and Extraction Joint Task Force. We do that with the IRF Office. It used to be great in the last White House. We had a great relationship with Ambassador Sam Brownback and others, we still do, but we eliminate sometimes the need to quickly move people who are being persecuted and oppressed. And then we also run the Crisis and Conflict Joint Task Force, Afghanistan. I've had a team in Israel. We have a very large presence in Ukraine, and we, we do a great deal of everything from therapy to command support. So we're pretty, you know, stretched out internationally. Domestically, also, one of our founders is a prosecutor, and he's got a task force at the Attorney General level, excuse me, the DA level in Pennsylvania. You know, it's basically a collaboration between nine different DAs to fight CSAM together. So this is, this definitely, though, is exciting because I've seen other task forces and seen what it costs and what it takes and all that. This is a unique opportunity. So I hope, I hope it has tremendous success, and, you know, you could, you could slap another zero on that number for me, and it's worth it. So appreciate you asking who we were. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for any of us?
I have, I have a couple of things, thoughts I had here on the, on the board here. It says the total cost, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, that's, that's presented there. But my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is there's, there's, in essence, a pledge that you guys have put up to two hundred and fifty thousand. Is that included in the seven fifty-five?
Yes, yes, it is.
I thought it was, but I just wanted to.
It's going to be, if you'll look at the next slide, I think, it says annual a hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for licensing fees. They're going to be responsible and have, I guess, given us a, a letter indicating that they would be responsible for all licensing fees and costs, which would be, could be up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, that.
And that would be included.
That'd be part of this, a part of your overall cost would be subsidized, I guess is the right word, with the two hundred and fifty thousand. If you could go back one, one slide where you're, you're talking about the original, there you go, the seven fifty-five. I noticed a lot of this, and correct me again if I'm wrong, but I noticed a lot of this is, is up, upstart, I mean, startup.
Yes, sir. And also.
Work stations, vehicle and equipment, that's not necessarily always recurring cost.
Exactly. Yes, sir. And also Lantern Rescue is going to provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollar startup fee also. For, I think, January, we were planning on opening the door, and they had wrote a, a letter indicating that they would provide that to us as a startup cost.
I, I just think it's great that you got counties willing to work together to try to resolve this kind of problem because it's out there. I think everybody wants to kind of just get it.
And I think that is what's going to make this program work and work well, is getting more people involved, other counties involved. And, you know, we may not stop with just three visiting sheriff's offices.
Sure.
You know, we may do four or five. It's whatever resources we need. And as you look at the sheriffs that were chosen, you know, Alamance, Davidson, and Forsyth County.
Forsyth County, it's nothing to do with the political world. We didn't look at it that way. We looked at it as to who could be best suited for this program. And we chose, I think, three of the best.
But the upstart, the start of all this is the fact you're willing to put together, Randolph County is, but give you some housing as a place to be. I want everybody to kind of understand that. It's not just Randolph County doing it, it's collaborative.
Exactly.
But you're saying we're willing to put together the fixed cost of doing some of this.
Yes, sir. And that's why our responsibility, financial responsibility, is a little bit higher. You know, I'm proud to say Randolph County, this started in Randolph County, you know, with the help of others. You know, we opened the door for the other sheriff's offices and state and federal. And our relationship that we have worked on for the last five years is strong, and otherwise I don't think no one from the state level, county level, would have jumped on board. And I believe if we don't do it here, I guarantee you next month, somewhere in Alamance, Davidson, or Forsyth County, they're gonna be having a board meeting in reference to the Invictus Project. That's how strong this project is. And I'm tickled to be a part of it.
Sheriff, I was looking at the four counties. Randolph County is the smallest of the four, but we're providing majority of support, a large portion of it. So I challenge those other government entities, Davidson County, Alamance County, and Forsyth, to fund at the same level that we are.
Well, the.
We have to go to Davidson and go into Fred McClure's coffers over there, we'd be glad to do that, but.
Yes, sir. One thing, you know, they are gonna be responsible for manpower, training, their vehicle, they're gonna be on their payroll. They're not employed with us, they're gonna be specially assigned to work with us, so.
But I would encourage them to.
Well, we've got one of the richest sheriffs up here, Alamance County, it looks like you would donate a little bit.
We need to do some advocacy work, just let us know, we'll get on that. And I will, I don't know if it's an appropriate point or not, but I noticed that in the budget amendment, that a portion of this is coming out of, well, being reserved out of, Will, if you want to address that.
No, just for the first year, the board can talk about through the year, how you want to fund that, but the first year it was put in as coming from strategic planning to get it going.
Yeah. So, it's funds that's provided by Waste Management fees, so, you know, that's another, I think, plus for us as well. It's not necessarily a budgeted expense, at least the initial portion of it, so, I did want to point that out.
So, what are we specifically committing here, Will, on the first year? I know these.
The total ask was $755,000. The $260,000 for the renovation piece of that, you know, we typically have done that, pay-as-you-go, so that was coming out of general fund balance to take care of the renovation for that, so that's done. And the remaining $500,000 for operations, the Landon Rescue is paying for the $250,000, and then the remainder is what's coming out of the special reserve fund for the well-being.
Could you speak to that?
Thank you, Major. I appreciate it, Senator. Discussion, questions?
All right, well, if there's no more discussion, and I appreciate that, my question was about making sure everybody understood where the dollars are coming from, especially startup, and addressing, I guess, everybody. But Sheriff, you know where I am on this, you know, we met early on on this, and I appreciate you involving me from day one and meeting some of the folks. And I don't know from that project that was referred to, or that most recent, you know, action y'all all took together, I don't know if I'm angry and sick about it or happy that we were able to get it done. I mean, so, I kind of go back and forth on that, but I'm proud of everybody's work together. So, if this motion is appropriate for all, for everything, Will, I guess it best covers. So, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the county of Randolph to enter into an agreement combating the exploitation of children and human trafficking with the Randolph County Sheriff's Office.
May I have a second to the motion? Can I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Including the budget amendment.
It didn't say that, but including the budget amendment.
I'll second that, too.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Those in favor of the motion to approve? Let it be normal saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose no? And it passes unanimously. So, thank all of you for the patience. Thank you. Our next item is a strategic planning funding for Victory Junction.
I have the privilege of introducing Ms. Tanya Hayes, who is the Leadership Giving Director for Victory Junction. She will then introduce the parties responsible for making their strategic planning funds request for Victory Junction this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Administration. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. We at Victory Junction are incredibly grateful to be here this evening, to give you some updates on our needs, and to hopefully make a strong case for support. Before I turn it over to Chad Coltrane, our CEO, and to Tori Dirks, who is one of our program managers at camp, I do want to just share how incredibly helpful Leah Gerhart and Michael McKenzie have been in this whole process. I'm sure I don't have to tell you what an incredible asset they are to the county. And so I'm gonna now turn it over to Chad, again, our CEO at Victory Junction.
Good evening, Commissioners, and I, too, want to just thank everyone, thank you for your time, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to share about our campers and our wonderful families that we serve, and certainly appreciate all the administrative teams' work and support of putting this together. And I'm not sure where I've got to point this to advance it.
Was there a PowerPoint?
There was a PowerPoint, yes, sir. Don't have that? Not a problem, we'll go without it. So, here's what we'll talk about. So, we, I don't need to tell you exactly what, you know, the history of Victory Junction and where we were founded by the Petty family, but we're certainly, you know, our mission is to serve kids six to 16 years of age with chronic medical conditions and serious illnesses. And we do that free of charge. And we're 140 acres at Victory Junction, it's a $45 million facility founded in 2004, it's now 19 years old, and if you're counting, next year will be our 20th anniversary. So, we provide those camp services free of charge. We say that we are providing a life-changing camp experience for those children on our 140 acres. So we provide love, empowerment, and hope at Victory Junction, and that's what we aim to do at camp. So, I'm gonna pull out my PowerPoint so that I'll keep on task, otherwise we'll be here all night. Asking me to speak about Victory Junction in 10 minutes is like asking Richard Petty not to drive a car. So, the, you know, the main thing is we're part of a much larger network of camps, the Serious Fund Children's Network that was founded by Paul Newman. So many people don't know that about us. There are 16 camps worldwide. There's nine camps domestically here in the United States, and there's six other camps, seven other camps across the world. We also have another 14 global programs in the Caribbean, Asia, and Africa. And so we're a much larger part of a great network that is called the premier medical camps in the world. And so we're certainly proud of that fact here, and that's located right here in Randolph County, in Randleman. You know, we're known in that network of camps, as we're known as the camp that serves the broadest scope of children. So we see the sickest of the sick. Kyle Petty says that all the time, is from the very beginning that we want to serve the sickest of the sick, of those kids. And so we don't turn away very many kids. We, it is our goal and our mission to figure out how we can serve those children and make sure that those children get served through our services and our camp programs. We're a 100% accessible facility. That facility, like I said, was built in 2004, and it's 100% accessible, and we take great pride in that. And we're known throughout the network as being that camp that will take those children and having those accessibility, those accessibility features. We take it upon ourselves that if, whatever child comes to camp and whatever, whatever their ability level, we're gonna modify camps so that they can participate in every single activity. It's challenged by choice, we don't force kids to go down the zip line, but certainly if they want to, we're gonna make sure that they have that ability to do so. If a kid wants to climb to the top of our 55-foot adventure tower, and that child has a ventilator, then we're gonna make sure that a counselor's gonna climb that tower with them and carry that ventilator to make sure that they get to the top. If that same child wants to ride a horse, then we're gonna have somebody walking next to that horse carrying that ventilator to make sure that that happens for that child. So if they come to camp, they participate in everything. That's just how it works at Victory Junction. In our history, so our footprint for Victory Junction is a little different than most camps, and I believe that's because of our celebrity founding with the Petty family. But we've served kids from all 50 states and four different countries. And not a lot of camps in the world can say that. And so that's all happening right here in Randolph County. So 50 states and four countries. We do that through three primary programs. Obviously, summer camp, everybody knows this as a summer camp, but we also do year-round programming. We do family weekends in the spring and fall, and we also do day programs throughout the, what I would call, the off-season. And on those family weekends, we actually have partnerships with organizations all across the country, Seattle, Washington, Chicago, Illinois, Georgia, Virginia. So we have partnerships with organizations that bring their folks from all across the country into our facility right there at Victory Junction here in the county. So, our third program that we also have is that we have an outreach program, that we take camp activities to bedsides and playrooms in children's hospitals in North Carolina and South Carolina, and now we've just expanded that into Virginia. So that three-state area where we're taking folks on the road every single day and visiting children in children's hospitals and taking camp activities so that they can forget about their illness for a time and have a little bit of fun. And so that's certainly one of the things that we want to do through that outreach program. The course of our 19 years, we've served 115,000 total kids in that time. That's about 10,000, right now we're averaging about 10,000 serves per year. To give you a typical summer, we see about 1,000 kids. To give you kind of an idea of what kind of, how sick some of the kids that come, so we service 1,000 kids, we have 20,000 medications that we're giving out over the course of a single summer. We will also modify 8,000 meals, and we actually count first at Victory Junction, we call them golden tickets. And we do about 1,000 firsts every single summer. And that may seem pretty benign to us who kind of have the opportunity to go to a lot of camps, so if I say, you know, you shot archery for the first time, no big deal, you met Richard Petty for the first time, no big deal, but when a child writes on a golden ticket and says, "This is the first time that I've made a friend," that hits home for you. If a child writes, you know, "This is the first time that I've ever been swimming," so a volunteer recounted this story to me, where they were walking into our swimming pool, and the volunteer asked the child, "You know, what do you want to do? You want to go to the deep end? You want to do the lazy river? You want to go to the splash pad?" And this 12-year-old boy says, "I don't know, I've never been swimming before." You know, for a guy like me who drove, who grew up in a rural area and swam in pools and rivers and streams and my parents trashcan at times, you know, that's humbling for me to think about being 12 years old and never being in a body of water. And so that's what's happening at Victory Junction, those types of life-changing, altering experiences, and we're proud of those. As I mentioned before, we're 20 years old. We've been a part of many, many studies that have been done, so we know our mission is strong. Yale University did a study with us, and through that study, our parents reported that 90% of our, 90% of our kids report that they left camp with a willingness to try new things. 85% of them report that they had more self-confidence when they left camp. So we know that our mission is working, we know that it's powerful. 20 years for a lot of people who are gonna celebrate that anniversary and that type of thing, but me as the lead administrator at Victory Junction, I think about the freezer that's been plugged in for the last 20 years, that sometimes works and sometimes doesn't. I think about the HVAC units that work sometimes and sometimes doesn't. And so for me, maintenance, and that was in our request, there's some maintenance needs that Victory Junction has and we're coming to you today about. The first is HVAC units. Our cabin row, we have 16 cabins, there's 32 HVAC units just on cabin row, we have 60 total buildings, to give you an idea of what we're talking about. So I'm talking about just a little small slither of camp where our campers stay and reside when the week they come into camp. We have four units that need to be replaced by summer of 2024, and that was one of the things that we requested. And for you, you may think about a summer camp having air conditioning seems kind of like a strange thing, right? That's something that's a luxury, but for us, it's a necessity. So I can tell you about a young man from California, Robbie, who drives, his mother and Robbie drive to Victory Junction every single summer, from California. And he does that because he has a serious medical condition that his body can't regulate its temperature. And he can't go to a regular summer camp or a summer camp that's local to his area, to his state. So they drive, they spend the summer driving across the country, they visit family in Boston, they come down to Victory Junction, she drops Robbie off, he spends a week at camp, and she goes to Myrtle Beach. She goes to Myrtle Beach and has some respite, then comes back and picks him up, and then drives back to California. She does that every single year, because we have the facilities on site to be able to be able to care for her son safely. And as all the parents in this room would acknowledge, we would do anything for our children. And she's a perfect example of that. So, our second request was about transportation, and again, we're talking about the need for these services across the states in our reach program. We have a number of vehicles that now are exceeding 200,000 miles, so that's one of the requests that we had in. We also have these great buses that our maintenance guys or facility guys keep those things nice, and they're up and running, let me just say, they're reliable. But over the years, those, they have wraps on them, and if I could paint a picture for you, I'm telling you that you're gonna let your child come and visit camp for a week, we're gonna take care of them, we're gonna keep them safe. And then I show up in a bus that my volunteer said to me, said, "Will this thing make it, will it make it there?" Now, it may, it may run like a gym, right? It may get there, but it doesn't look that way. The wrap on the roof is faded completely, you know, the bumper's peeling off, and my volunteer says to me, every time he gets in there, he says to me, he says, "Chad, will this car, will this bus actually make it to pick up the children?" Again, we're all about removing these barriers for these children to be able to access camp free of charge, and transportation is a big part of that. But a big part of that is the safety and the credibility of that safety when I get there in that van or that bus, and for that parent to be able to say, "Yeah, I'm gonna allow you to take my child away from me and keep them for a week and to keep them safe." So there's a big credibility issue around safety that is prevalent in that situation. And so that's where our request comes from in terms of transportation. And the last thing is in awareness, and, you know, I'd say this about our marketing and communications over the years, we lack the expertise of that. And so that's been something that we've been certainly working on. We are no longer the only charity in NASCAR. You know, that's the way it was in 2004. Now every single driver has his own charity, NASCAR itself has its own charity, as well as Victory Junction. So the philanthropy around NASCAR and this idea that NASCAR's funded Victory Junction has long since changed in the last 20 years. And so for us, we've got to be, and all these great things that I'm telling you about today, all these great things go on right here in Randleman, right here in Randolph County, and I think should be a point of pride for this county. I think it should be a point of pride for all of North Carolina. That's not anybody else's responsibility but ours. That's ours. That's our responsibility to make that happen. And the requested funds that we had would, would help us do that, to share that message about what's going on in Randolph County at Victory Junction. In terms of the strategic goals, there are five basic, and that was in the, it's in the slides, but there's five basic strategic, Randolph County strategic plan alignments, as I would call them. There's five basic alignments that you have between your strategic plan and what Victory Junction is requesting. You know, and I would just say that certainly Victory Junction is an asset to this county. Victory Junction is and always will be a resource for this county. We are marketing the region. We are attracting tourists from all 50 states and, as I mentioned, four different countries. And again, we are the premier facility in the premier medical camp association in the world, in the world. And it's right here in Randolph County. You know, these funds are needed and they'll bring certainly access for many people to Victory Junction and to Randolph County. And I know that I like to talk a lot and that's probably my, my best and worst asset, but certainly someone that's here that can speak to the, to the mission of Victory Junction better than I can is Tori Dirks, who is a former camper and a current staff member and now Randolph County resident. So I would like to turn it over to Tori.
Thank you, Chad, and thank you for hearing us out today. As he said, my name is Tori. I am the Program Support Manager at Victory Junction. I'm originally from Cary, North Carolina, so new-ish to the area. But I want to take you back. When I was 16, I was diagnosed with Crohn's disease. Add that onto anything else any teenager goes through in high school, it wasn't ideal. But I was really lucky that I got introduced to Victory Junction pretty early on, and it was such a blessing in disguise. Before I came to camp in this full-time role, I was in many roles with the Cary YMCA, back at home, with a software sales company. But Victory Junction kept calling me back. So I've been lucky enough to see camp in a few different lenses, as Chad mentioned. So over the last 16 years, I've held roles as a camper, as a counselor on our summer staff for three years, an intern with our reach program, a volunteer, a donor, and then for a little bit over two years now, this full-time position. Each role has had a huge impact on my life. As a camper, I learned at a very crucial time that I'm not alone and that there's others who understand what I'm going through. I made friends with so many people my age who had similar diagnosis or completely different, but they were able to understand how I felt and the feeling of being different from my peers and understand the stresses of my day-to-day. As a summer staff team member, I found a passion in supporting and serving the kids that we see at camp. And I switched my major from education, which is pretty similar to something more along the lines of child life. A biggest impact for me, working my summers at camp, was a specific camper who came and stayed in my cabin. And before she arrived, we were told that she was on hospice care at 12-years-old. I had never met anybody on hospice care in my life, so I was really intimidated by her. She was limited verbally and she was non-mobile due to the brain tumor. All of this was so scary as to how our cabin was going to make it work for her, but we quickly found her love for music. We'd be changing her and she would just start belting any song that was playing on our playlist. So the rest of the week, we just made sure we had music. So she felt engaged in something that connected to her. I'll let you know that if I hear the song "The Climb" by Miley Cyrus, there's not a dry eye. But she's someone that truly impacted to make it known that what I do matters, even if it's the littlest of things. As a volunteer, I learned to take a moment for what I love and find my way back to camp, no matter what it costs. My boss at the software sales company looked at me after I volunteered for a week and goes, what did you do volunteering? You're a completely different person now. She could see how much my bucket was refilled. And in my full-time role, I've been able to learn and grow with working some of my favorite people in my favorite place in the world. We get to impact the lives of our campers and families that come in, in all of our weeks over summer and weekends and the fall and spring. There's a camper, a boy who's probably now 13-years-old, that when he first came to camp, he was defiant, he was angry, he had an attitude like no other. His mom was clearly exhausted coming to camp with her, him and his younger brother. But they kept coming back every season. And every season, you saw this camper grow and change to the point where when they come to a family weekend now, you have to physically pull him away from the barn because he wants to show all of his new friends and campers the amazing animals that he fell in love with. He's no longer that grumpy kid and he actually is such an inspiration for what we do at camp. Camp, like Chad's mentioned and we've talked about, is a truly magical place. I'm lucky enough to get to see it firsthand and see the impact of what we do, how it has on our campers and families. But we can't do that without the amazing people that support camp. Moments like mine and what our campers and families seen would not be possible. We hope that we've made a compelling case for support with you guys. Chad is going to join me back up here and we're happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
I saw Chad, I worked a funeral for his aunt last week. He says, in Houghton.
I'm glad I didn't show up last week with you like I told you I would.
Right, right, yes.
Doesn't seem like it's been 20 years.
No, I was there. We, we flew down to Daytona to, to see that camp during that process with the Pettys. I think, no, one of the boys was working down there then.
Austin.
Yeah, Austin was, right.
Yes, sir.
All right, comments, uh, questions, comments, entertain a motion. This is a request for $100,000 from our strategic planning funds.
It's already been mentioned, but I would like to commend, I think this is the most thorough application we've ever gotten as far as a strategic planning fund. So y'all are, congratulations for that. We appreciate that.
Thank you for everyone's, as I mentioned, the administrative team, Tanya Hayes, everyone put that work in, so thank y'all.
Do I have a motion?
Sure, district.
Pardon?
No, no, thank you, chief.
Well, then I would love to make the motion. Do I need to read it, Dana?
I'm receipt.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I'd like to make the motion to approve strategic planning funding for Victory Junction in the amount of $100,000 as outlined in their most thorough and competent application.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion, questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those no, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you and, um.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good luck on a good camp next year, 20 years. Thank you.
Tori.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is D, which is our noise ordinance. Tanya Cato.
Tonight, we have before you an update to the Randolph County noise ordinance. We've had some concerns from citizens that the current noise ordinance is not doing what it needs to do. That ordinance was written in 1985, so we're looking at doing an update with some language and an update to the general statute reference in the ordinance. There's a lot of similarities between the previous ordinance and the current ordinance, but there were a few things added to accommodate some concerns that we've had from citizens to the new ordinance. And this is up for consideration tonight. I won't read everything to y'all, but if there's any questions, I'd be glad to entertain
Anyone have any, we did have a revised ordinance. I think everybody got a copy of that. I think there were a couple exemptions that were added down there.
Yes, sir.
So if I have any questions of Tanya before we open the public hearing? All right, then we will open the public hearing tonight for consideration of the adoption of the presented noise ordinance of Randolph County. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to this request?
I've got, I've got people's, I've already started signing up.
All right.
Sure.
Susan McDowell.
I'd like to give you all a copy of this because this pertains to the points that I'm going to address with the noise ordinance.
Hand that to the clerk.
Sure.
She will get it distributed.
Thank you, ma'am. Susan, she wants to speak into the microphone.
First, I'd like to start off with the update replacement of the noise ordinance for the county of Randolph should be immediately implemented for the well-being of all the residents in Randolph County as well as the residents that live on city and county lines. Understanding the problems before you can successfully resolve the issues. We have four issues in our, where we live. We live in a community that has many different cultures. We live in a community that has more than 200 family homes. It's gated and it's on 53.92 acres of an area. We're zoned for the city and bound by their regulations for noise. However, we're one of the lar, on one of the largest perimeters of our community. The backyard's neighbors are zoned for the county. We and they are divided by a fence that runs along the community property line. Thus, you have a fence line with neighbors living on both city and county zoned properties as close as a city home backyard. The problem with this is the city versus county's noise, noise ordinance are different. The city ordinance is active while the county's ordinance is out of date and inactive. The county's ordinance was implemented in 1985 with no chances to date, no changes to date. At each end of the fence, if you'll look on that map that I just gave you, there are two county neighbors directly behind us that have outdoor parties every Saturday, good weather permitting, for up to eight hours a day, long days. These parties are either extremely loud with music or live bands with musical instruments. The thumping of the drums all day long is an occurring nuisance. The live band parties have loud, large loudspeakers, amps, microphones, singers performing on their backyard homemade stages. Now, this is in the county area. It's so loud that the sound carries over the entire 200 homes, over the 54 acres, very clearly as if it's inside our homes. It sounds as if you're right there in the concert because of the way the sound travels. This is something a lot of people don't understand. The geographical configurations of the land in North Carolina, especially where we live, are up and down and hilly. Sound can go from one spot 54 acres over and sound exactly as it originated. These types of parties belong in a building built with acoustic designed by engineers already regulated by the county or city and permitted for a proper location, not a residential area. These buildings are available and can be rented out to the public for such affairs. This should not be allowed on county residential properties.
Ms. McDowell, you have 30 seconds.
30 seconds?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I'll make this real quick. The county has allowed these people to have loud parties and music. We have gone through the sheriff's department. We've gone through all the procedures that were asked of us to do with no prevail. We've spent, I've spent, I personally filed a, um, I filed a formal complaint on October 14th, 2019. We've done everything that the authorities have asked us to do. We called the sheriff's department. They send somebody out. They tell them to turn it down and they turn it down until the sheriff's deputies are out of sight and they crank it back up again.
Okay.
I don't know about you and your homes.
Ms. McDowell, that's, that's your time.
Thank you.
We have, we have limits on the, we have a four-minute time limit.
It's very shameful because we had a lot to say.
Well, you're making, you're making your point, Ms. McDowell.
Am I making my point?
Yes, ma'am, you are.
And it's embarrassing to the sheriff's officers because they go out four and five times in one day and they don't have any authority to do anything else. So we are promoting.
Yeah.
And thank you.
It's not just your area either. I mean, and this is intended to give the sheriff some tools that he can use to stop it.
Okay, okay.
That's the intent of this ordinance.
Okay.
Can I ask you, just to, since she's, obviously, and her neighbors have done a lot of research homework. So in your presentation, you were saying, you know, one of these on the corners over here, whichever one, doesn't matter which one. So you're, you're, you're aware, I can go rent it for a party next weekend, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
I could go rent it for a party next weekend.
Mm-mm. No, 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 no.
I think she's saying that these homes should utilize a commercial space to go rent.
Oh, they are saying, but, so now it's just an open party? There's no fee?
There's an.
This is someone's residence.
Right.
Okay, I'm just asking. But that's my understanding.
They just bought something in their backyard.
It's not, it's not a venue that's used, it's just me having a big party.
They have built a stage and they have.
Every single week.
And they have live bands and we have to listen to it for eight hours.
Yeah.
I guess the point I'm getting to is, you know, is this a commercial operation? Are they charging admission?
Oh, no, sir. It is not a commercial operation.
No.
These are not paying taxes on it.
Well, that's kind of where I was going.
Right.
Get them for taxes.
So they've been doing this every weekend and it started back in 2019.
Oh, it started before that. These people here that lived before me, that are coming up behind me, it's been well over 12 years. But the thing is, there is nothing in the regulations that can stop what they're doing and this new ordinance will definitely put a halt to a lot of that. So we're all for it. We're just saying we're all for it.
That's all you need to say.
That's what we want.
We're all for this.
That's what we want to hear you say.
I apologize that it's taken so long.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell.
Josie Reese.
Hello, my name is Josie Reese and I am a resident at North Meadows. And also Susan and other people in our community, we've been there about 10 years. But anyway, like she says, when we moved there, it was for quiet because we're older people. And within like six months, we started hearing the music. So we went through the procedures of 911 and everything and always they said, would you like to speak to an officer? And after a while, it was like, well, why should I speak to the officer unless he's going to go and ask them to turn it down or whatever? Because, you know, after eight o'clock, people should start settling down. So anyway, our managers and owner, they brought, uh, they could, they did a letter for us to tell you all that, uh, since they cannot be here, this letter was put together by the residents of North Meadows Mobile Home Community. And over the last 12 years, the noise from the block, a Morning Glory Drive and beyond has become a nuisance. In addition to the noise, there has also been late night gunfire by semi, it was like a semi-automatic weapons who were just pow, pow, pow. As the office manager, she said she had heard numerous complaints from all of us, we are a large community, over all these years. Our tenants do exactly what we tell them, which is to call, to call it in local law enforcement. But most of the folks are retired, like I said, and there are younger families in the front of the park. We live in the back of the park. And, um, she said, unfortunately, with such disturbances every weekend, they can't do that. They can't, we can't have peace and quiet like we want. But, um, she said, I feel there needs to be an action taken regarding the people in the county that create such disturbances for our residents quite frequently. She said, perhaps the noise ordinance could be amended in such a way to accommodate all. The petition just shows that the noise is not unheard by only one or two individuals, but several. And in addition to retirees, there are also retired military people. And in addition to retirees, there are also retired military people in which some suffer from post-traumatic stress disorders. So, can you imagine when guns are going off like quarter to 12, 1:00 in the morning, how it can affect them? And she said, um, we would, we come to you with utmost respect and confidence that you will help us with the issue at hand and we have signatures that we were sending around for people to sign, you know, to let us know that, um, they want, see what you all can do for us.
Now, are you going to leave that with us?
Hmm?
Are you going to leave that?
I can.
Please.
Does we have copies?
Yes, I can.
Please, please pass that to the, to the clerk, Ms. Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rebecca Hartzell.
I wanted to bring up that one of the residents behind us there, his mobile home, he has built a shooting range. And in fact, last, I think it was last weekend, one of his people that were there shooting got shot and they get drunk and it alarms me, especially as an older citizen, that some, they get out there and they get drunk and they're shooting. What if they miss the target? And I really hope that y'all can shut that shooting range down. You can see it on the, let's see, if you're looking at the picture, you can see it on the right side of the picture. And I hope and pray that you can make an ordinance where a shooting range should be far out in the country and not real close to the residents like that one is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartzell.
Hi, everyone, I'm Lori Shelton. And if you look on the paper, I live at 2578 and I just called last Saturday night, which is the seventh time, and I actually spoke to the city police officer and he showed me on his computer how it was the county. And he told me he was going to go over to this specific address because he knew exactly where it was at and it was a county issue that he was going to have to call the sheriff's department. And this was like 12:00 at night. All I wanted to do was go to bed so I could get up and go to church. I have to turn up my TV in my bedroom if I want to watch TV on a Saturday night, turn the volume up to 26 on my TV. This is not acceptable in my home. And something needs to be done. If y'all not going to change the noise ordinance, these people need to start being fine and then be fined again and again, a higher rate, a higher rate each time until they can get the message. I don't know, you know? Would you like it at your home every Saturday night? Do you go to church? Do you want to get up and go to church and feel like, don't feel good? I don't like it. I'm tired of it. And the gunshots, I'm scared of a bullet, when a bullet goes up, it's got to come down. When they're shooting outwards, we don't know where it's going to go. And I have PTSD and I am fed up with it.
But you, you are, you are all for our ordinance?
Excuse me?
You're, you are speaking in support of the ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have to sign up previously.
Good evening, Chairman Frye, Commissioners. My name's Larry Chilton. I live between Ramston and Frankville on Highway 22. Do appreciate you considering this noise ordinance. I know I've been speaking to all of you for a couple of years now, a little over a year and a half anyway. So, uh, the neighbor to our direct west has a 37-acre tract of land. They build an open-sided, um, a party barn, for lack of a better word. And there's numerous, numerous times they have well in excess of 200 vehicles down there. So, no idea how many people that would be because I've not been down, but that would be quite a, quite a large gathering. So, I have called 911 several times. Actually bothered the sheriff himself and he's graciously accepted my phone calls. So, thank you, Sheriff. And he's, you know, got things taken care of. As the one lady mentioned, a lot of times it may be 15, 20, or 30 minutes and it's back up again and have to call again. So, I am definitely in support of the noise ordinance and I do appreciate some of the language that's in there, uh, the peace and dignity of the county, the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens because when you can't sleep and you do, you know, I go to bed extremely early, I get up extremely early, um, you know, it, it causes you to not sleep. We could not have this conversation on my front porch and I live 400 yards away from, from that party barn at me. We could not have this conversation at this level. Matter of fact, the deputy from the sheriff that responded, uh, the, the last event when he got out, the words out of his mouth was, "Good grief, how do you stand it down here?" So, again, I appreciate y'all taking this under consideration. I do have a question to see if maybe could get some clarity. I know we, there's several places in section 1.4, Loud and Disturbing Noises, uh, uh, subject to the provisions of this section. Any person or persons are prohibited to make, permit, continue, or cause to, to be made or create unreasonably loud or disturbing noise. And then it goes over to, uh, point three over on the next page, the sound amplification equipment, which in this case is the base. It will literally, seriously, it will vibrate water on a glass sitting on my kitchen cabinet. The water is vibrating in that glass from the base. Dishes in our cabinet are rattling and we're 400 yards away. So, but the question I had was now, on the back, the allowable noise is 60 decibels from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, but we don't have a decimal stated during the rest of the time. So, if they're making noise for my clarity and for, for my neighbors that could not be here, um, so if this noise is, is unreasonably loud, as it states over here, unreasonably loud or disturbing, uh, it don't matter the time of day. Am I clear on that? Am I correct?
That's the way it reads to me.
Of course, this board can do, the board can do whatever suits them, but this was written to be specifically between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, which is not different than the times of the previous ordinance. That wasn't something that seemed to be a concern, so I did not make a change to that. But again, the board could do what they wish.
But, but you're questioning that it should be earlier than that, Larry?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, because as the lady previous said, the band, the, they have a live band down there every time they start up practicing about 2:00 to 2:30. And another thing this has done, it's emboldened some of the other neighbors that actually are actually renters of this neighbor to play their music when they get home from work some evenings. Now, I don't get home in time to, to, to hear it a lot of times, but even on the weekend. We, we actually heard it on Thanksgiving Day in the afternoon. Now, somebody else may have called 911. I didn't, but it got quiet fairly quick. But yeah, I, I strongly think there needs to be a decimal limit in the middle of the day, the middle of the evening, because the evening time is when, if, if I want to have our family over for a cookout, we couldn't, like I said a while ago, we could not have this conversation at this decimal level and be heard. So, um, I know I've looked at several noise ordinances across the, the state and the, the union for that matter, and there's a lot of them that have decimal limits, you know, throughout the day as well. Uh, and I do want to commend that, that it also states in there that, you know, you know, we're not going after the firearms because I like shooting my pistol and my rifles and, uh, it's for lawful use of firearms is not covered under this. So, I appreciate that for, but, uh, yeah, I would strongly like to see something in it, you know, because a lot of times at 7:00 is when it is just really starting to vibrate the, the dishes and the items on the wall in the house. So, uh, I do appreciate your consideration and, and, you know, and the time to speak tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work y'all do for the citizens. I know sometimes y'all have a thankless job.
We want to give them something to work with.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chilton, can you just sign in? Thank you.
I, I just would also point out while somebody else is coming to the podium, that so many of the complaints that I have gotten, this has gone on, it, it's not a, a two or three times a year thing. It's not a one weekend a month thing. It's an every single weekend event and it starts at 2:00 in the afternoon and goes until 11:00.
Hold on a minute, Ms. Chilton.
Well, yeah, so there are recordings of that, of, of all the calls that have come in with 911. So, I do think that, um, that we must, you know, that we must address that with our, you know, with the ordinance, you know, daytime, you know, these daytime, you know, noises that are so disruptive and so, um, you know, offensive to entire neighborhoods of people. Um, yeah, I mean, I think we, I think we definitely need to do that at the very least.
Well, I was just going to ask real quick. I know, I don't want to get dinoed, telling this too much, but I, they're going somewhere with this, is, are you aware that this particular venue close to you is a venue that I could go rent for a birthday party?
They, uh, my understanding from, uh, some people that, I don't do Facebook or any of that, but that have looked at it, it, um, is a wedding venue. Because they have enough land to qualify as a farm, they're using farm exemption that allows farms to have, uh, wedding venues. But I do know for a fact from some of the deputies, the sheriff, they, they hire, hire off-duty deputies to work down there and they have told me more than one time, there's been some other events not associated with a wedding.
Yeah.
But I.
I know we're just considering the noise thing tonight and I understand that. I know we need to move on with it, but it just, after looking at a bunch of these and the one coming up in Grantville and everything else, is, I mean, there's no way I'm going to buy a piece of property, and I know it's a home, somebody lives there, and have a party with 200 people, a live band, and hire security every weekend, week in, week out, for months on a time unless somebody's making money on it.
Correct.
I might like you, but I'm not having a party for you every weekend, Larry, with 200 people. This ain't going to happen. I can't afford the food. I can't afford the security. I can't afford the van, I'm at the band.
I'm with you.
So, I mean, somebody's.
It's the farm exempt.
So, if I had a goat farm, I could have a party every weekend and make as much noise as I wanted to?
Pretty much.
Okay, all right.
But I find it interesting that.
I mean, you hire security. That's not free. I mean, somebody's paying, they want.
Sure they are.
Out of the goodness of your heart?
And we have other event centers.
That operate.
That we don't get calls about.
Never.
You know? And, you know, Steve sitting back here has some outdoor events on his property and they don't amplify the sound, so there are no problems. So, if, if these others can do it, it seems to me like, you know, you know, they all can do it, you know, that they all can, that we can put some restrictions in place that would just, um, force people to be more considerate of the neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They've been tried for ages.
Everybody knows me, but.
Hey, Amanda, you're up.
Amanda Varner, I'm going to speak on behalf of some of my Grantville neighbors. I know some of them are here. We've been dealing with it a little over a year. He actually built a building, so the building doesn't help, by the way. And his Facebook page for a long time said, blank, blank, event center. He has removed the event center thing now and still I think he's told planning and zoning that he's not charging, but I'm not sure about that. So, they do start early. I think it gets louder as the night goes on. Law enforcement, my neighbors have called, I've called. They get there, they sit at the store right there at the corner of the house, which is diagonally from his property, and they can hear it there. They go over there, they'll send a deputy in, they'll stay there, they'll ask him to turn it down until he can't hear it anymore. I think one night they were down to, I can still hear it, make him turn it off. Just like Larry, um, things in my, our houses rattle on the walls, things almost fall off the shelves, you can't sleep. They go, I mean, they still go on 11:00, 12:00. But, I mean, it doesn't even matter what time it ends. The thing is, it's happening all the time during the day. So, it, I'm glad to see something on paper, but I would definitely like to see that the noise ordinance is any time of the day, not just between certain hours. We can't sit on the patio and enjoy an evening when it's nice outside. You have to go in the house or go somewhere else. So, but I am thankful that there's finally something.
Amanda, what, what did you say at the start about, they built a building?
Yes, they have built a building now and, um, Hal can tell you more about it. He knows all about the situation there and the zoning. And he is now farm exempt or equine exempt. I'm not sure which one he chose. So, but this is very large building that you could park a couple transfer trucks in, if not more.
And that's where the party is typically?
Do you know they rent it out, lease it out or?
I can't confirm it's being rented. He tells people that he's not charging, but.
So, that answers my question.
How big do you think that, just as a guess, how big is that building you're talking about?
You want to take a guess on how big it is? How big is that building? It's big. I mean, my other neighbors, they all, it's large.
I guess it's probably a 520 or so size.
Oh, wow.
It's bigger than that.
Paved parking lot?
Yes, he's paved the parking lot, paved the drive into it, put a nice brick entrance now.
Does he have security?
Not that I know of. Yeah, when the porta-johns come in, you know there's a party coming.
I didn't hear that part.
When they bring the porta-johns in on Friday, you know there's a party coming.
No, it's not free.
Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? This is trouble.
I'm Steve Manus. I live down in the Grantville area, but.
And your chicken houses are too loud.
Yeah, well, I can't turn their clucking off. They just keep on clucking.
Does the noise disturb your chicken?
Yeah. No, I'm, I mean, I, this is the first time hearing of the noise ordinance. I guess I've been buried in form for the last little bit, but I, I put on an event every year at my farm. It's free for the community to come to. We build a stage off the front of our house. We invite the community in, hire security. It's a one-time event, once a year. The noise does carry. You can't help, if you got a band coming in, they're going to have speakers and it gets loud. But I don't know if this noise ordinance, you're talking about any time during the day. I mean, how do, you can't control how far sound's going off your property. I live in the middle of 175 acres. My nearest neighbor is a half a mile away, but there's a lot of creek valleys up through there and it can carry a long ways away. Sometime, most time they're hearing preaching, but, you know, still some people might find that offensive. So, if you go putting noise ordinance that's on one person and you put it on another just because you don't like it, it's not very American. Um, and I, and I'm, I know these, I know what these folks are talking about, what they're dealing with. I can't imagine it, but if you put an ordinance on during, any time during the day, you limit events like mine. If you put an ordinance on during, any time during the day, you limit events like mine and other events that are doing stuff just free one time a year for a community. Now, we're not charging rent, and we're not charging tickets, so it's an unticketed event. There's no money exchanging hands except unless you want to buy a snow cone, you know, but we don't, we don't charge nothing for the community to be able to come because we just feel like we're supposed to do something to give back to our community. So we try to give a free event every year. But you would limit, if the noise ordinance goes into play, somebody that didn't like what we was doing on our farm could call on us.
When do you have, when do you have your...
I always have it at the end of September. Usually at the end of September.
I mean, during the...
But yeah, we'll start, we'll start sound checking around 10:00 a.m., and we always finish before dark. So, I mean, I, I get that, you know, the 11 to 7 thing, I understand that. If I lived where those folks were living, I'd be feeling the same way they were, but you can't base the whole county off of one place.
No, but it seems to me like, um, and Tanya's our expert here, but it seems to me like it could be written so that, um, you know, a one-time event is one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
I get that, and I agree with that statement.
Or two or three times a year, but an every...
Every weekend thing? I understand exactly what you're saying.
In a neighborhood with 200-plus homes...
That's right.
And I've been up there.
Yeah.
And they post a lookout, and you can hear it from...
A long ways off.
A way off, and then you can drive up and get close and park your car, and all of a sudden...
I just wanted to speak on behalf of the guys that are just trying to do something nice for the community one time a year, that we don't get lumped into the same...
How many years have you been doing it?
Ten years.
Sheriff?
And how many?
Have you, have we had any complaints on this event he's talking about? Remember?
There you go.
Anybody over there in Sheriff's Department, remember?
Not that I'm in there for it.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's loud, but no complaints.
And I'm not trying to be cute, but, and I get your concern, but like, oh, you want to, you want, let's, I mean, he knows a good answer, knows a good answer. Okay, the sheriff said no. Anyway, so my point, I don't want to be cute, but I mean, the planning and zoning department is complaint-driven. I mean, if, so if you go out and do something that's completely against our zoning ordinance and nobody ever calls them, you'd probably get away with it for 50 years till you die. I don't know, probably. Unfortunately, I mean, good or bad or indifferent, that happens. We hear those, those things, Ash Reed, every month.
I just heard that, and I got concerned.
But, you know, probably nobody's gonna, you know, call the law, if they hadn't already in 10 years, I'm guessing, I don't know, maybe. Maybe it's a bad way to look at an ordinance, but I get it, I get it.
Yeah, so anyways, thank y'all. Appreciate it.
I'm not asking you to break the law, though.
Sir? Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? All right, hearing none, then we will close the public hearing. Good comments tonight, we thank you for that. I guess the question, do we, do we send this back to Tanya and the planning board to see if, uh, we'll make any other changes to the, 11 o'clock does seem a little late?
Well, one thing that wasn't included, that at least in my area, is vehicles, loud vehicles, making noise over and above, you know, modified mufflers and that kind of thing. How would that be enforced under this ordinance?
Let's see here, so...
We focus mostly on fixed noise. What about noise that's moving, and how would that be enforced?
So I made exception for any vehicles that are standard equipment for manufacturing purposes. We did get some concerns about that. Didn't have any concerns about vehicles, so they don't, aren't in there, but can be added.
This morning, I was outside at 6:15 outside of my house, and the decimal level there was between 60 and 70 decimals, just standard noise without any additional. I think part of the issue, too, is it's not the background level so much, it's the spikes above, because I don't, I'm used to the traffic on US 421. What I don't hear, it, something's wrong, you know, you know, there's been an accident or something. So you become used to it. So it's not so much the base level, I don't think, in some instances, as it is the variation in the spikes, because that's when the noise, the disturbance occurs, because the background noise is always there.
Right, I saw more of those types of things in city ordinances than I did county ordinances through the state, and that's certainly something others do address, so we could put that in there pretty easily.
I think as we become more, uh, challenged urban versus rural, we're gonna run into that.
It, it doesn't address those loud, they're not stock mufflers, they put them on just to see how much, how much noise they can make.
I'm tired of this.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
What about really loud music from vehicles?
Oh, I can hear, I can hear on 421, I can hear the bass going down 421, you know, you feel it. So it's, it's vehicles, too, it's not just standard.
Forget about Caraway. She's gonna write that in.
Yeah, but see, Caraway, I mean, that's out where I am, and I hear it all the time, but it's, um, there's, there's not the spikes, it's just that drone. You know, it's that drone, and it's...
I don't know, I mean, just the vehicle thing, I think you got it, maybe the, because, I mean, well, obviously I'm in town, so this doesn't fall into county, but like you said, just the normal noise from Salisbury and 64, I'm used to that. But, you know, on whatever night, if it's usually weekend, some, a couple guys are parked somewhere, somewhere off Salisbury Street, and it's just...
Yeah.
What's going on? Yeah, so...
The race track's not like that, and it's not, I'm not getting vibrations inside the house or anything like that, because I'm several miles away.
Well, the other thing I, about the, not only the enforcement, but the violations and the, uh, what was it? The penalties in section 1.07. Based on what I've heard tonight, and I don't know how you would delineate that, but it seems to me we might want two schedules, one for, for those venues that are for hire and those that are, are not. I don't know if that gets us into more trouble or not. It seems to be someone who has a venue and continues to violate the ordinance by just paying the fine. I think we need to increase those fines. Granted, I know it's, it looks like the limit is a 30-day period, and then kind of the cycle resets. I think that probably needs to be a little bit longer, uh, reset period, because somebody could have an event venue and be fined, have one each week, it'd be 150, 350, $550 from the way I'm reading the ordinance, and then he gets to start over again. So that may be an expense that he's willing just to pay and, and break the, break the ordinance. I think that might need to be, some of his, fines needs to be a little bit steeper and maybe increased and, and also certainly larger as the more frequent that it occurs, because some people might just be willing to pay for it.
Can you turn, okay.
Yeah, or he can, he can charge five bucks and say he's, he's charging.
We come on for that?
Just think of something to think about.
Can I say something?
Well, I was gonna ask you something, but go ahead.
I, I don't want to belabor this point, and I don't want to complicate matters, but what I would point out, and I don't want to offend the people here at North Meadows, but when you try to write an ordinance that's going to cover the entire county, you're going to have these problems with applying such a broad ordinance to all of those areas and all of those situations. What I would point out to some of these people from North Meadows and some of these areas, like Ms. Varner, when you have people who, the nature of the violation or the nature of the offending activity is to such a high degree, and it happens with such frequency, they have a remedy. It's a remedy that's not through the county, it's through our court system. And those people can file nuisance actions with the courts, and they have much greater remedies than we're talking about the fines here. In those lawsuits, if you pursue those lawsuits, a court, a judge, or a jury can actually order the offending parties to stop that activity. You know, that's gonna be very difficult for this, you know, this county to do that, but, but courts can impose fines, and they can actually order that the activity be ceased, you know, and so, so that, that is something that's available, I mean, uh...
Do they have to retain an attorney to do that?
Yes, yes, people will have to retain attorneys. And, and what, what, what the comment is, is that, is the people who are, you know, live on fixed incomes and they can't afford that, and I sympathize with that, and I, I get that, but, but that's, that's, that's the challenge that, that you have before you. I know most of you recognize that, a lot of you in the audience recognize that. I'm saying that to, to some of you who may not have been aware that, you know, there is, there are other remedies available to you that, that don't flow through the county. It's, it's directly to the court system. I'd be happy to, let me, I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards if you want me to. Yes, ma'am.
If, I think I, if we want her to go back and give some, some different language.
I, I would just say that this ordinance requires a lot of careful study and careful thought, and I, I think a lot of different agencies, venues, businesses, they need to be looking at this very carefully, because there are a lot of potential impacts on our county, you know, from the business, from homeowners, businesses, the time, all of those things that we're talking about. I, as an attorney, I, I can, I can see the potential problems, you know? There are, and, and the problem that I see is that we all, we all see what we think are the clear violations, and the clear violations are the repeat offenders. The problem is, you know, what about leaf blowers? What about chainsaws? You know? Well, I know, but we have, we have people, we have some people who have said that we need to enact this ordinance in all hours of the day, and so there's just a lot of things that we need to consider, and we need to be very careful and very precise with our language before we adopt.
One of our exceptions says noise as a result of normal or routine lawn and yard maintenance and landscape.
And that's an exception, which is perfect, and it needs to, and that's exactly right, it needs to be in there, that's...
I'm just, I mean, I'm just, I'm just...
It's an exception to the...
I'm just, I'm just balling, that's, Ben's argument, can, can you do the leaf blower and chainsaw after 11 o'clock?
It's an exception to the entire ordinance. I don't think time would have any problems.
Okay, okay, anytime, okay, all right.
So if we make some revisions, do we have to have another public hearing?
I don't think we have to have another, you don't, you don't have, if you choose to have another public hearing, you can, but you don't have to have another public hearing.
All right. Am I hearing that we want Tanya and our, as our planning director, to make some, based on what's been said here tonight, to tweak this a little bit and bring it back to us?
Okay.
Everybody all right with that?
Do we have a motion for that?
We have a motion?
We, we were talking about noise, I'm sorry.
Well, we've had since 1985, the current one, so I think another month.
Did you make a motion, Hope?
Are we tableing this and looking at it some more? We gotta...
We're gonna send it back to her to make some revisions based on what's been said here tonight.
Yep.
Is Hope making a motion? Did Hope, did you make the motion?
Um, no, but... I, I would make a motion that we take everything that's been said into consideration and allow our director to work on it a little bit more, to address some of those concerns, and bring it back out, hopefully in January, that may be a little soon with the Christmas break, so February maybe, or whenever it's ready.
All right.
Sound good?
February 1st, February Commissioners Meeting? You have a second, you have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose no, and it's approved, we'll bring it back in February. Okay, um, our next agenda item is the TDA request, Amber?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here with the full support of my TDA Board of Directors, many of whom are present in the audience tonight, and I appreciate their attendance, as well as some of my staff members. We'd like to request your consideration and relocation of our current TDA office. We are in a rented space at 500 Albemarle Road in Ashboro. If you're familiar with that site, it's right behind the State Employees Credit Union at that five-point stoplight. Our current lease is a 10-year agreement, and we will move into the fourth year of that agreement in January of '24. With exciting expansions occurring with our tourism partners and the growth in our hospitality industry, I'd like to share some of my thoughts on why I feel like the TDA would elevate the visitor experience to Randolph County through its relocation opportunity to the F3 EC site. I'd like to explain some of the current hurdles that we're facing in our location. In January of 2020, we moved to the location, leaving this very building, we were downstairs, where we resided almost 10 years as a, as a tenant of Randolph County government. At the time, we had office space for our staff members that were in place, and we had ample storage for our brochures and promotional items. So we fast forward into 2023, and our space is very minimal. Recently returning to full capacity, following staff reductions due to the budget limitations of COVID, we find ourselves outgrowing the office space capacity. We have tight quarters during our monthly TDA Board of Directors meetings, parking for those meetings is at a premium as well. Our excess promotional items and brochures that we distribute to our tourism partners and area events are being stored in a small office space. That small office space was intended for us to house college or high school interns. Those partnerships are very important for us, for our mentorship opportunities, so we don't have that space now to, to provide that opportunity. Storage and office space issues aside, the visibility of our organization and our current location is challenging at best for a visitor to Ashboro or Randolph County. Our organization serves as a hub of information for our tourism partners, allowing the visitor to encounter more personal assistance in planning their experiences than a Google search. The vein of our Ashboro Hotels is located along the Highway 64 corridor, and I'm not, not quite sure that any of those frontline desk hotel members could even direct a visitor to our current location. We're tucked away, we're hidden from the interstate and the US 64 corridor with no directional signage in place currently. So what do we envision? What do we think it would look like if we were to relocate to the F3 EC site? The issue with our organization's visibility would improve, and that would allow us advantage to promote and market Randolph County as a tourism destination, not only for our partners, for our visitors, but also our residents. This will significantly expand our relationship with our hotel properties by simply being a few stoplights away as they direct visitors for easy access to additional area information and activities. Having a prime location along the US 64 corridor and the US 64 loop will provide the ability to market to traffic traveling through Randolph County, to create potential stops for those that are just traveling through, similar to the effect that we have at the I-73, 74 visitor centers. We aren't always a final destination for those visitors, but we're able to plant a seed of information and send them to return their next visit to North Carolina or Randolph County. If we were to relocate to this site, we could assist and serve as the hospitality arm for the new event spaces created in this state-of-the-art agricultural facility being constructed. As events, seminars, expos, classes, and more activities are created for the open area, open arena, and exhibit hall, the visitor to this F3 EC... open arena, and exhibit hall, the visitor to this F3 EC site can be met by the expertise of our tourism department, starting with reserving the event space, booking a hotel room, creating itineraries, and sharing ideas of additional sources of entertainment and family fun while the visitor is in town for their special event. We'd like to offer to be that puzzle piece, the hospitality arm, as an integral part of the success of the F3 EC site for return visitors and events. We envision a great partnership with agricultural and cooperative extension communities throughout the county and the state. We greatly desire to support their efforts to the best of our ability. As noted in your pre-agenda memo, the TDA Board of Directors approved the support of our request to relocate during our November 15th, 2023 board meeting. We realize that the current construction of the F3 EC site does not include a standalone space for the TDA. We would like to request permission from the Board of County Commissioners to consider plans for this location. We currently, we are currently approaching year four of the 10-year lease at 500 Albemarle Road, and come to you this evening with this relocation and structure request in hopes that building materials and construction costs would be within a reasonable budget and available for this timeline. Our organization is prepared to fund an architectural design of the office building, with the county financing the construction, which would lead to the TDA being once again tenants to Randolph County government. Our TDA Board of Directors and staff are hopeful that this request is thought-provoking, and we see this opportunity as a permanent home for the TDA. I've been with the TDA 17 years in February, and I've moved three times. I would like to find a permanent home for that visibility. This relocation will be optimal for the agricultural community, the hospitality community, and for Randolph County. Thank you for your consideration and your time this evening. I'm open to any questions.
I understand full well your request. Uh, I think Commissioner Allen, now, you mentioned it to me some time back, and I had mentioned it to Commissioner Allen, who's been involved with the, and I think to Kenny on the Farm Food and Family Event Center out there. Um, so I, I don't know about space, or you've got a standalone building, I don't know if that's, how big that is. Um, so I, I don't know, um, this is something we, we take up and see what the options are out there. My understanding, there's no, there's no current, there wasn't any extra space created just for growth potential or something down the road? I mean, we don't have anything in the building?
No, no, it's, it's.
It's all accounted for. It's all.
Based on the current budget, all the, the property, the degrading, the buildings, all within the budget, uh, that's not to say there's no more property available out there. The whole site's not being utilized, but it is, uh, no other, no out parcels or anything like that have been identified.
So, for us, it would be, is there space? Is there buil, building space? And then work with them on what, what kind of building is required, how many offices, et cetera? And, um.
And we're currently in a 3,000-square-foot rental space, so we were thinking 5,000 to 6,000 square foot to give us room to grow with the expansions happening at the zoo, with the support we're giving the Zoo City Sportsplex, and just tourism overall in the next 5 to 10 to 20 years is really kind of what I'm looking at.
The, the other issue that's going to come up, uh, and the, I'm on Animal Services Advisory Board. You may have other folks wanting to relocate out there too. So, I think we probably need to make a determination of what needs to be out there, what can be out there, and when it needs to be out there. Because there, you know, like I said, there's, there are other folks that, that have already mentioned that, um, they would like to have a presence out there as well. So, there, there's six years still left on the lease, so.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, we got to make a decision this week. Um, but I, I, I think it's good that you presented it to us. I appreciate the TDA Board and their foresightness and looking at it. But, uh, I think, at least my personal thing is, let's get the Ag Center built, and then we can figure out what we want to do.
Absolutely.
After that, so.
And I think both of these, when you consider the animal shelter also, they're both county, they would both be county facilities. So, the county would be looking at the cost of building both of these. I, I understand the request on the animal shelter being next year's budget, if I'm hearing right. So, I think we probably should, I mean, you're making good points, and I, I don't, I don't disagree with, with your handicap where you are.
One difference.
I don't disagree with that at all.
One, one difference that, I mean, I think you pointed out, well, maybe we haven't really necessarily pointed out, but between, and I don't think this is a night to talk about animal shelter, because it's not their agenda item, but one point is that animal shelter, if you build a new animal shelter at, at the Ag Center or in Farmer, doesn't matter, that's going to be a county cost period, ongoing period. I mean, TDA is self-sustaining, and they pay rent, they have paid rent to the county, and so if you were to build a building, just like they used to pay rent here, they're basically able to pay the mortgage on that building.
Become a tenant again.
So, it's definitely a rent on versus just animal shelters like.
But we, we don't have those figures yet.
Yeah, yeah, we don't know what the number is, but.
What the rent would be, what the cost would be.
Yeah, yeah, but theoretically, they have the ability to, to pay the mortgage, you know?
But going from a 3,000 to a 6,000-square-foot building, rent's going to go up.
Yeah.
And, and then also, I think that a really valid point, I mean, I, I still understand the part about a permanent home, and it does make sense to have it there and in that corridor where it is, but, you know, one thing that I've wondered about, and maybe I should be more involved in, but is, you know, once the Ag Center's there and up and, and running, and everything's cleaned up, and the doors are open, you know, I think people are going to start, hopefully, people are going to start coming from regionally and statewide, whatever, to want to take advantage of Randolph County and where it is geographically located, and we want to have this event here, and how do we do this, and this, and this? Well, TDA, that's what they do. You know, and I'm, and everybody who's housed at the Ag Center, oh, it's going to be a great facility, you know, that's not really their wheelhouse to facilitate an event, you know? So, that's kind of like, who's going to do that? And it's kind of a great partnership, probably, you know, because, you know, but whatever.
I would agree, especially as I think about, you know, heading into, you know, Myrtle Beach and that, that whole area, and even back before you get to Conway, that's where the Vista Center is. So, um, so I think it would, you know, I would agree with Commissioner Kidd, that I think it would be a, a great partnership and an appropriate location, if, if it could be worked out.
Yeah, I think it's a natural question or idea. I sure do.
Yeah, and I appreciate y'all's thoughts on it, and, and, and understanding that we were a part of the process with the first project. It's a new day. We've got a new plan. The F3 EC site is a new plan, so we're willing to help in the hospitality arm any way we can to help cooperative extension and, and soil and conservation with any events. Even if we're not out there, we're still going to help them.
Sure. Yes. I think you're right about your workload.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
How long is your contract with the state on those rest areas?
They're renewed annually.
Annually?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a out, an option?
I'm sure there's an out in it. And we overtook those in 2012, so.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're, we're going to carry forward with it. I mean, we'll, we'll hear more. Okay, Veteran Services, Elizabeth?
I want to thank you for having us here this evening. We have a lot of exciting news to share with you guys. Kenneth Harville from our office has been working extensively by traveling to Randolph County or the Randolph Correction Center, assisting veterans and their families that may not have had that opportunity before. Our office is working on hosting a Veterans Resource Day sometime next year. This will offer, offer a variety of free services for our veterans, such as a meal that day, haircuts, dental cleanings, items donated prior to the event, and services that include employment, housing, and transitional support. One of those would be the Mobile Vet Center. That's in Greensboro. They do travel and can come out here. Since March 3rd, the pantry and closet has helped over 150 different occasions with veterans in need of food. This number continues to increase, and our non-perishable food has diminished significantly. We could use any and all support with that. I know we have had social services and a couple other county departments that have brought food to our office. Our newest, Rita Honeycutt, started in January as an office assistant. Since then, we have been able to reclassify her as a veteran service officer. After training through the Nationals and the State Regional Office here in Winston-Salem, she is now officially accredited through the VA. With our influx of veterans from the PACT Act and continued outreach, this has been a necessity that we can better serve our veterans through the VA now. Finally, I would like to announce the biggest news. We are excited to announce that our application for the Wall That Heals is able to come to Ashboro has been approved. Ms. Honeycutt started this process at the beginning of the year, and without her hard work and dedication, this would not be possible. I would like to have her come up and explain the significance of this memorial.
Good afternoon, or good evening now. Sorry, it's been a, it's been a busy day at our office, but like Elizabeth said, I am very excited to announce that Ashboro, for the first time ever, has been nominated as one of the 25 locations for this year, or this coming year, to hold the Wall That Heals. In your packets, you'll get some information about that and what it all encompasses. The Wall That Heals is a three-quarter replica of the Vietnam Wall that is in Washington, DC. It is a portable unit that will be brought to us, just like the unit in DC. It holds the names of over 58,000 veterans that died in Vietnam. With it coming to us, it will be open 24 hours a day. We'll have several ceremonies while it is here, and we'll have the Vet Center here for support of our veterans, because sometimes this will be the first chance they've seen to be at the Vietnam Wall. We've been working with Sheriff Seabolt, his deputies, and our veteran volunteers to be standing over the memorial on guard 24 hours a day while it is here. As of right now, with working with the wall, we are anticipating between 5,000 and 10,000 visitors to the wall. It will require over 200 volunteers to maintain while it is here. These guards, these volunteers will help with guard duty, assembly, educational staff, the Welksum Center staff, and escort when the wall arrives. We will, we've been working with Randolph Community College, and they have offered to be the physical host of the location, because they do have a large enough area for it. What else? As part of the Wall That Heals Experience, a mobile education unit will also be on-site. This will be an opportunity for any member of the community to better understand the Vietnam War, our veterans, and our memorials. Our co, our office is currently serving over 15,000 veterans that we've been told by the NC, um, NCDVMA. So, over 30% of our veteran population is veteran, is Vietnam veterans, and we owe it to them as a community to provide this healing experience. This event will not be the only thing we're planning to do this upcoming year to better support our veterans. We are also currently working with Letters From Home for a September event. And as Elizabeth said, we are also working on a resource event day with the Triad Veteran Coalition. All of these different activities are different ways we're trying to really promote our outreach and let veterans know that this office is available to them. Are there any questions about the wall or any events we have for this next year?
So, the date is already, is this the date, the January 25th date?
No, the January 25th date is for the TVC meeting. Triad Veteran Coalition has asked us, it'll be the first time ever that Randolph County has been asked to be a host of their, their monthly meeting.
So, what's, is there a date? Do we already have a date?
So, the press release and the actual dates of when the wall will be here will be released next week.
Okay.
So, I promise, as soon as that happens, everybody's getting an email.
Very good. And it's just here for one week?
One week, yeah. It has to hit 25 locations a year, and this year is actually the first time that it will be in Hawaii. It's never visited outside of the lower 48, so this is a huge year to even be nominated.
And there was over, what, a few hundred applications?
There was a few hundred applications, so to get this this year was, was huge. They said that our application stood out because of the fact that we cooperate with so many other veteran groups, and because of the fact that the main people who will be running the committee are all veterans that work for Elizabeth. So, we've, we've kind of stood apart from a lot of other people, apparently. We had a really good Zoom meeting with her, and she was very impressed what we brought to the table.
Awesome. And I'm sure you have a good backlog of volunteers.
I, I hope so.
I saw 200 on here, I believe.
Well, we're working with the AMBETS and American Legion Post, they're going to be helping too, so.
That's good.
And I've already, and Elizabeth knows, I've already informed my husband, I will be sleeping down here, like, I'm not leaving this thing. I just, this has been something I've always wanted to do, and thankfully, Elizabeth has been a great leader in being like, yes, take these opportunities, bring them to our veterans. So, as soon as she said, yep, put the application in, like, I, this is my baby.
Very good.
I'd just like to say that we have a lot of good things going on, you know, in serving our veterans, and, but even, you know, we, we can never lose sight of the fact, I don't want our, our citizens to ever lose sight of the fact that the single most important thing that you guys do is connect veterans to services. So, it's important for people who are veterans to get into that office and to, just to let them know that you're in Randolph County, or people may come from other places. I mean, we have, um, I've been told by some veterans here that in years past, they didn't find what they were looking for, so they went somewhere else. I don't ever want to hear that again. You know, we've, we've got, that office is on the ball, and the single most important thing they do is connect veterans and their families to services that, that you have earned. So, thank you.
And I'd like to just throw this out there that, I, I don't know, because I've not met many of the other department heads, but Elizabeth has been amazing. She's very encouraging. She has been so supportive of, she's got three disabled veterans that work for her, and she's always been accommodating, understanding, and whenever we have a veteran that comes in and needs to sit down and get, like, she, whatever she needs, she is putting out there. So, I'd just like to say that she's awesome, not just because she's my boss.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you. We look forward to the date.
Thank you.
Like I said, next week, you will have the press release in hand.
Very good. Okay, Paxton, you're up, honey. This is the contract on the Seagrove Yuara Package Plant.
Before I get into my presentation, I wanted to make a quick announcement. I got an email this afternoon from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. They were, told me that they have approved the Seagrove Yuari Pump Station Enforcement. So, y'all had previously approved that. However, now that they've approved it, we can actually move forward, get the contract signed, and get construction underway. So, it was good timing. So, just wanted to share that with you. For tonight, we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant. Here's a map of Seagrove. Town limits are highlighted in yellow. There at the bottom is the wastewater treatment plant property highlighted in red. Zooming in on that parcel, there at the top of the screen, you can see the existing Lux Cannery Building. Just below that, in the yellow square, is the wastewater treatment plant, and then the rest of that parcel is mainly the spray fields, which, there's no issue with them. They're in pretty good shape. It's the wastewater treatment plant that we want to talk about. Zooming in on the wastewater treatment plant, here's an aerial photograph. The equipment that is currently in operation, I've highlighted in yellow, that is the domestic waste part of the operation. The other items are highlighted in red, that is the more of the food, it's either food handling waste, which is no longer in operation, or it's some things that were built and never actually put in operation. The food handling waste is about 30,000 gallons a day, and that is what their permit has, has been reduced to a couple years ago by DEQ. The food handling waste was 60,000 gallons, and the main point I wanted to make with, with this slide is, um, our engineer, LKC Engineering, is recommending a 90,000-gallon per day wastewater treatment package plant. And so, that's about three times what our current capacity is, permitted capacity, and is also within the range of the spray fields that have they previously been approved for. Here's a photo of the digesters. The one on the left is. The one on the left is for the domestic waste. That unit, you know, will have to stay in operation until this new plant is in place. The one on the right is the old food handling waste digester. And the main takeaway of this shot is, is space. You'll see in a couple slides, the engineer included a cost for demolition that he had as optional. However, there's a good chance that we may need to actually go ahead and do that to clear space on the property. There's only so much space there, all the existing domestic waste has to remain in place until the new, so we may have to go ahead and do some of the demolition of the older food handling waste.
Paxton, when you had the 30,000 gallon capacity-
Mm-hmm.
Does that, that, but they can only use 80% of the, isn't there an 80% limit?
Well, they, they can't add anymore once they reach 80% of that. Unfortunately, right now, they're, they're pretty much maxing out their permitted capacity.
So, 80%, that's 24,000.
Yeah, 20, around 24,000, so. Before, you know, when they had the older flow meter, you know, they were thinking that their capacity was, you know, 15, so that we thought we had, had additional capacity. And, you know, once the flow's increased to what we're seeing, it's, it's maxed out. Before I get into the budget, I just want to talk a little bit more about capacity, because it is a little confusing. When Seagrove first did the request for funds, they had to request an expansion to 120,000 gallons a day. When Wooton did their master study, they recommended that we move forward with the project, however, they recommended that we increase it to 175,000 gallons a day, and this was the chart that they included in that study to back that up. And if you first look at that, you know, it looks almost like we're going backwards if you just look at the totals. However, you have to remember that the other project that we have, the Pump Station Enforcement, is diverting a lot of these flows to Ashboro. So, I redid this, this chart, using all those flows and sort of categorized them, which ones would remain at the existing plant and which ones are going to Ashboro, and you can see that a lot of the larger, you know, flows are actually associated with the northern development that goes to Ashboro. I did increase the current average daily flow before they had used 15,000 gallons a day, because that's what, you know, the meter was saying, but now that we know that it's actually 30, I increased it to 30. I also had the 10,000 gallons a day of additional development, I included, left that in this column here, just for good measure, and with all those combined and the future development, it brings us to about, just, just over 72,000, which is in the range of that 90,000 package plant.
Does the 7,500 for the Charter Academy include all the buildings now?
Yes.
And-
Which it may actually be less than that, they've, you know, the state requires you to plan for certain gallons per person per day, but in reality, the, since they don't have a kitchen, then it will probably be less than that.
So, theoretically, in time, that pump station that we're putting in, it's gonna carry that 117,160 gallons down there?
Yeah, once it's built out in the future with all these flows.
Probably some years down the road with some of these projects, but my point is, they still some capacity there for Ashboro?
Yes.
Wouldn't it, 250 or something like that in that pump station?
Yeah, the Ashboro, of course, they'll have to approve any project, but they had over, it was over 200,000 gallons a day capacity, so they should be able to handle this. Looking at the budget for the 90,000 gallon a day package plant, we have some site work and piping, about 100,000, headworks, just under 400,000. The actual package plant was about 1 and 1/2 million. Then with the processing and electrical and generator, brings the total construction cost to just, just under 2 and 1/2 million. We have a 10% contingency, and what we're here for tonight is the Design Bidding and Construction Administration of $394,500. Also have the demolition of the existing equipment I included, which brings the total project cost to 3.3 million, a little over that. And if you go back and look at what the request was, back when they were doing the 120,000 gallons a day, it was right at 2 and 1/2 million, so the numbers have really gone up in the last couple years. Actually, if you look at the projection that was included in the master study, they had about $35 a gallon, and if you look at these numbers, we're really close to that estimate at 90,000 gallons a day. A little bit about schedule, we've reached the point with the ARPA funds, that the timing of getting the design complete and being able to have it put out for bid before December 24th, when the funds have to be encumbered, you know, it's getting tight, only certain projects are probably gonna qualify, we do want to use as much of the ARPA funds as we can. My first thought was that we had funds left over from the grant, DEQ, the 2 and 1/2 million dollar grant. When the bids came in low, we had about $800,000 left over, so my first thought was, we'll try to use as much of that as we can. However, in talking with Bill Lester with LKC Engineering, if we do that, we will have to run it through DEQ, which will probably slow things down to the point that we wouldn't, would not meet this December 24 deadline. So, at this point, we're thinking that just you go ahead and use the existing ARPA funds that we have available. I've talked to Bill Lester, he thinks that if we don't have to go through DEQ with our ARPA funds, that we can meet this deadline, meet this schedule. So, he's, he's looking into it further, but for now, we think we can meet the schedule.
Now, this might be a question for Will, but we had some excess when we got the bids in on the pump station.
Yes, the money he was talking about, we would need to find another project for it, it's available, but to meet the deadline for most of the project costs, we'd probably just make it all county ARPA, and the other savings from the 2.5 grant, we'd have to use for, you know, some maintenance project or something else. It's not really tied to Seagrove Ula. We've just chosen to, you know, put it there till we get this worked out, but that money would be available for anyone.
Right now, it's not, it's not assigned or encumbered anywhere.
No.
There may be some options, you know, the headworks that we had talked about, if, if there's some way that we could go ahead and fund that with those remaining funds, we will. However, just looking at the, at the additional process that you have to go through of getting any of those changes approved by DEQ, it could slow things up, so. And there's also a chance that the feds could extend that deadline, and if they, if they do that, that'll give us some extra options too. With that, I'll go ahead and mention the request is to award a contract to LKC Engineering in amount of $394,500 for Design Bidding and Construction Administration of a 90,000 gallon per day package treatment plant for Seagrove Ula Metro Water District, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And that, that would be ARPA funds, Will?
Yes, that would be our recommendation, is we just treat this whole project as our ARPA project, try to use up that money.
Questions of Paxton?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion-
Right ahead.
To approve the, to approve, excuse me, the LKC Engineering Provider Proposal Design a New Package Plant to replace the existing system at the old Lux plant.
All right, you have a second to the motion.
Second.
Motion's been in a second, further discussion, and be ARPA funds.
Yes.
Further discussion. All right, those in favor of the motion, let it be known I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and it's approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your patience tonight, Paxton.
Glad to get the notice from the state, though, Will.
All right.
I don't think, Mr. Chairman, I don't think, I have to tell you and the other members of the board, but that, that's been needed for years, actually.
Well, I think we've got some people to speak up on the board down there now and get some things done and hold to a line that's been missing for some time.
Yes, I agree.
I think our last appointment down there was, was a good thing for that process.
Yeah.
All right. Hal, has anything, Commissioners have anything? As I mentioned at the start of our meeting, for those that are watching at home, Hal will be retiring at the end of this month, and at our January meeting, we will have some proper recognition of Hal and his years of service, and our appreciation to him for that. We wish a very merry Christmas and a happy new year to everyone and the folks that are watching from home. And seriously, I, I hope, and our county needs prayer. We have decisions to make, and we have opportunities out there in front of us, and some I think are coming to fruition pretty fast, but we again wish all of you very happy holidays, and thank you for this year and 2023, and we'll see you in 2024. Thank you, and God bless, and Merry Christmas. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, we're going, we have, we got a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to go into closed session for South Carolina General Statute 143, pass 318.